At that end, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
I don't know. I think we do, right? Michelle, we should set up our...
Are we late?
He's not standing.
Commissioner Calkins, whenever you're ready to convene.
This is Commission President Ryan Calkins reconvening the regular meeting of June 28, 2022. The time is 12:06 PM. We're meeting in person today at Seattle Tacoma International Airport Conference Center and virtually through Microsoft Teams. Clerk Hart, please call the role of Commissioners in attendance today.
Thank you. Beginning with Commissioner Philemon.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Hasagawa.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Mohammed.
Present.
Thank you. And Commissioner Calkins.
I'm here.
Thank you. We do have four members in attendance today.
Due to the continued virtual component of participation for our meetings, we have staff, external presenters, and members of the public who may be participating on their personal devices or from their telephones. We made arrangements to accommodate the virtual format. Later, we'll take public comment from people who are participating by Teams as well as from those who, in person, who have signed up to speak. For anyone participating on Microsoft Teams, please mute your speakers when not actively speaking or presenting. Please keep your cameras off unless you are a member of the Commission or Executive Director participating virtually, or you are a member of staff in a presentation and are actively addressing the Commission. Members of the public addressing the Commission may turn on their cameras when their name is called to speak. For anyone at the dais here today, please turn off the speakers on any computers and silence your devices. When you are recognized to speak, you will press the button for your microphone to be audible, and we'll press it again to silence it when not actively speaking. All of the items noted here will ensure a smoother meeting. Thank you very much. All votes today will be taken by the roll call method since there is a virtual component to the meeting, so it is clear for anyone participating virtually how votes are cast. Commissioners will say aye or nay when their name is called. To be equitable, I will ask that all Commissioners wait to be recognized before speaking. We are meeting on the ancestral lands and waters of the Coast Salish people with whom we share a commitment to steward these natural resources for future generations. This meeting is being digitally recorded and may be viewed or heard at any time on the port's website and may be rebroadcast by King County Television. Please stand or join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item of business today is approval of the agenda. Are there any motions to rearrange the orders of the day or any items to remove from the consent agenda for separate discussion? Okay. The Commissioners, the question is now on approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any objection to approval of the agenda as presented today? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. Next on our agenda is the Executive Director's Report. Executive Director Metrick, take it away.
Commissioners, good afternoon. With the summer solstice last week, we are now officially in summer, and the weather over the weekend finally reminded us of that. I'd like to begin my remarks by wishing everyone a happy Pride Month. This past Sunday, over 70 participants joined Portwide Pride, our employee resource group, and participating in the Seattle Pride Parade. This was the largest contingent marching with the Port Pride ever. Thank you to all the volunteers for marching on a very hot day, and a special shout out to Commissioner Calkins for being there. I'd also like to acknowledge that last Monday, June 20, the port celebrated Juneteenth as a port holiday. I'm proud of the port's leadership by being one of the first local governments in the region to recognize Juneteenth as an employee holiday for the second time. Credit goes to the port's Chapter of Blacks in Government along with the Office of Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion for their tireless advocacy. And of course, thanks to the Port of Seattle Commission for their leadership in creating the holiday for port employees. It was great to see the state and national governments follow your lead. I really want to thank Don Hunter, President of the Big Chapter, for all its members for inspiring Juneteenth program earlier this month, last week as a matter of fact. This was a great program celebrating Black artists with meaningful messages about our history and the equity work we still have ahead of us. Thank you to all the Commissioners that attended and to our executive leadership team, whose members were there to help serve lunch. In other port-related news, there are plenty of things for us to be proud of around the port. Just recently, Seattle Tacoma International Airport was named the best airport in North America at the Skytrax 2022 World Airport Awards. Voted on by passengers around the world, the Skytrax Award is the most prestigious accolade in the airport customers, in airport customer service. Big congratulations to Aviation Managing Director Lance Little and the SAA staff and workers at SAA who deliver on the high standards for travel and the airport experience. And a special thanks for our passengers who are making this award possible and for voting for us. In maritime news, earlier this month, I was pleased to offer the opening welcome for the first meeting of the Alaska-British-Columbia-Washington Green Corridor Project. This kickoff meeting marked the beginning of a landmark effort to create a sustainable maritime future, beginning with crews. First-moving partners have committed to exploring the feasibility of zero greenhouse gas emission cruise ships along routes between Seattle, British Columbia, and Alaska. I want to thank our Maritime Division and environmental sustainability staff led by Stephanie Jones-Stevens and Sandra Kilroy for their efforts to get us to this point. This is not an easy or quick process. However, it is essential work to protect the environment at all levels. In additional sustainability work, on July 16, we'll host the celebration of the completion of the Duamish River Peoples' Park and shoreline restoration work. We have restored 14 acres of river habitat and built places where people can access the river. We're creating new habitat for Chinook, salmon, and other wildlife along 2,000 feet of the Duamish River. This project reflects our long-term commitment to the environment and engagement with the community. Moving to today's Commission meeting, I'd like to highlight a few items. On our consent agenda, Item 8H is a competition waiver in indefinite delivery, indefinite quantity contract for the completion of equity training for supervisors in development of a long-term equity training strategy. Under New Business is authorization to execute a contract to continue our salmon safe certification program. I'll have more to say about that when I introduce the item later. Item 11 is a briefing on our Port of Seattle Police Department's 2021 Annual Report, and I'll have more to say about that when I introduce it. Also, under New Business, we have Item 4C, or 10C, an authorization making the much-needed improvements to our primary fire station. Then again, I'll have more to say about that during its introduction as well, just giving you a look ahead. Speaking of our fire department, I'm proud to recognize and welcome our, to our team, five probationary firefighters who graduated from the Fire Academy just last week. This is a very challenging program, and the recruit class started with 19, or started with 32 and 19 graduated from the program. And I think we have some of our firefighters with us in the audience today. You know, I told them that they'd each have 15 minutes to talk about why they were motivated to join that, so, but I think I'll bypass that, but I just, I would like them to stand and be recognized. Congratulations. Please remain standing. And Chief, why don't you stand up too? You know, we want to see. Congratulations to Kylie Montgomery, Jacob Burns, Ashley Proctor, Kayden Underwood, and Autumn Kanda, as they all, as they represent themselves well in the port in their training. Not only did they make us proud, but several also received high praise and earned additional honors. Kayden Underwood received the Marty Howar Physical Fitness Award. Jacob Burns was Class Val Victorian, and Kylie Montgomery was selected to the Chiefs Company and voted by her peers to give the class address. That's pretty amazing. Congratulations. In addition, Port of Seattle Fire Chief Randy Kraus was selected to provide the Chiefs' address at the ceremony. This was a great evening for the Port of Seattle and our fire department. Congratulations again to our new firefighters and welcome to the port family. That's a great way to begin, Commissioners. Thank you, and that concludes my remarks.
All right. We have, this week, been witness to, this last week I should say, been, been witness to a decision by the Country Supreme Court that rolls back a constitutional right that for 50 years had, had been ingrained in our culture and society and has personal and professional impacts for port employees, for our stakeholders, and for the way we operate as an institution. And so I wanted to take a little time today to provide each of the Commissioners an opportunity to comment about that and to share a bit about what we're going to work on to ensure that we remain the kind of institution, both internally and also as a really important means of transportation infrastructure for those seeking care. And so I'm going to start with Commissioner Hasagawa.
Last Friday, nearly 40 million women, girls, transgender, and gender nonconforming people in 26 states lost access to abortion, a vital form of health care. And although we currently have access to abortion care in Washington State, even here, our rights are not guaranteed. This is an issue that touches all of us, including our community members and our staff. And in this way, it is very much a port issue. And many of you have reached out and expressed what this decision means to you. I'm speaking today as someone who chose to build a career over building a family, as someone who chose to be a mother in her own time and on her own terms. I'm speaking as someone whose daughter has fewer rights than I did and my mother before me. To be explicit, bodily autonomy is a fundamental right. The Supreme Court's decision to overturn Roe versus Wade effectively removes decision-making power from people who can get pregnant and gives that back to the state. The health, educational, and socioeconomic outcomes of forced pregnancy and birth are dire, and like all bad policies, it hits the most vulnerable the hardest. The Port of Seattle's mission is to promote economic opportunities and quality of life in the region by advancing trade, travel, commerce, and job creation in an equitable, accountable, and environmentally sustainable manner. So although we may not directly influence policies related to abortion, we have so many tools in our box to empower people who can get pregnant. Economic empowerment leads to social justice. Equity work requires centering people who are desperately impacted by oppression, and we will be unapologetic in being a welcoming facility to pregnant people seeking sanctuary. The Port of Seattle is not a Christian institution. The Port of Seattle is a place of opportunity. We just celebrated the grand opening of a new international arrivals facility, where we imagined people crossing a bridge, setting foot on our land, the promise of opportunity and a new day to make their way. Imagine a woman arriving from Ohio, whose doctor looked her in the eye, told her that she is forced to carry a high-risk pregnancy against her will and that she may die. Imagine her stepping foot into Washington State, knowing that she has the opportunity to live, to choose, by choosing abortion. Last Friday, I shared my own abortion stories publicly, because in a time when they are trying to drive our issues underground, I choose daylight. I choose to speak on what's real and what's at stake for women, girls, and gender queer people with uteruses, because in a time of blatant misogyny, racism, transphobia, and homophobia, living authentically and out loud is an act of resistance. The social stigma reinforced around sex and reproductive health and abortions is deadly. And as one of our employees pointed out, the more we talk about it, the more normal it becomes and the more accessible it will be. And to every woman without access to abortion care who is scared and confused and lacks community support, to you I say this, there is no shame in your experience. You are not alone. Washington State is a sanctuary for women seeking abortion care, and we welcome you. And as a Commissioner, I tell you that when you arrive through the Port of Seattle, you will be safe. I am the first Asian woman, and only the fifth woman elected to this body in the port's 110-year history. If not for the right to choose, there would be no Commissioner Hasagawa, and I would not be the mother that I am today. None of the decisions I made were easy, but they were mine to make and live with. And as a woman, a mother, and Port Commissioner elected by the people of King County, I will do everything in my power to advance justice at the Port of Seattle. To members of the public who are listening in, including members of our own workforce, write in with your ideas. We will collect them and consider them, and I will work collaboratively with my colleagues upon the Commission and staff in advancing justice for all.
Commissioner Mohammed.
First, I just want to begin by thanking Commissioner Hasagawa for speaking your truth, for your strength. It is truly an honor to serve alongside you. It is a tragic time in our history. It's one that makes me emotional. Overturning Roy v. Wade and ending nearly 50 years of precedent of constitutional rights for people is dangerous for our country. It is important for our community to understand that abortion is legal in Washington State. Next week, I am excited to be introducing an order that will ensure that our port police won't cooperate with other states' abortion investigation or data sharing, which aligns with Governor Jay Inslee's multi-state commitment to protect reproductive rights. I think we all here can agree that our port resources should not be used for other states' abortion investigation or businesses. That said, I carry so much pain today because I worry about the ripple effect that this decision to overturn Roy v. Wade will have on our most vulnerable communities. Access to reproductive care is about health, the health and well-being of people. I wonder what is next? What will they try to get rid of next? Let me be clear. This decision to overturn a constitutional protection for women and families will disproportionately impact poor people. It will disproportionately impact those who are already furthest from opportunity. It will impact parents, for example, who are working two jobs, who may be working at airports across this country, who somehow don't have access even today to basic health care and affordable health insurance. The decision will disproportionately impact folks who have to decide between paying a medical bill or paying rent each month. It'll impact those kind of people. Many of them who work for multimillion-dollar companies and on facilities that bring billions of dollars in profit, yet somehow they still access, they lack the access to basic health care. To me, this decision to overturn Roy v. Wade is about expanding the wealth gap in this country. It's about the rich getting richer and the poor getting poorer. No matter what state a wealthy person lives in, no matter where, where their political or religious beliefs may be, they will have access to reproductive care. They will have access to get on a flight and get an abortion. My question is, as the Port of Seattle, do we believe that everyone deserves access to health care? Do we believe that the 20-plus, 20,000-plus people who work on our port facilities deserve access to basic health care? If that answer is yes, I ask, what are we willing to do with our partners and our tenants and their contractors to ensure that we are providing health care on our facilities? What are we going to do to ensure we are protecting the health care of our community? How far are we willing to go to create economic security for people in our own community? And to our port employees who feel unheard and unprotected, please know that we are committed to supporting you through these physical and emotionally charging times. I encourage you all, as employees of the port, to channel some of that frustration, to fight for health and economic equity even here at home, even here at the Port of Seattle. Let's be the change that we want to see. Thank you for the time.
Commissioner Philemon.
I just want to thank you both, Commissioner Hasagawa and Mohammed. Your life experiences continue to enrich this organization, and the impacts for you are something that I have had some direct experience with, but not anything close to your direct experience. I, I am devastated by the idea that any court or any person could have the right over somebody's bodily autonomy, that, that is so beyond anything I would ever expect to be a national law, no less a interpersonal relationship. It's a, it is so contrary to anything that a free world would tolerate. But also just the general right of privacy and all the implications it could have for all these other laws of ours that, that are fundamental to who we are as a nation, is, it's just devastating. And, and the idea that people could be put in places of power that would have anything to do with limiting these rights is beyond me. And so if anybody ever thought that, you know, your vote doesn't matter, clearly it does. And, and I just hope that we can do something to expand the court, to make the court reflect the will of the people, to do something to undo this, this great crime. So thank you again. And if the port can do something to help, I'm all there.
Thank you, Commissioners. I will speak to process. We are, at this point, of course, this just came out last week, but we are internally looking at what processes we might need to engage to ensure that the safety of those seeking care in Washington is not compromised by anything that would happen at the Port of Seattle, and to make clear the position of the Port of Seattle institutionally around bodily autonomy, women's reproductive health and rights. And in addition to that, I just want to make a particular appeal to a certain subset in this debate, and that is those folks who feel it's important to send a message to my colleagues filled with hatred, racism, misogyny. And I would ask that you erase their name and put in mine. Send it to me instead. Get into, send it to my DMs. I have received zero, and I know that my colleagues have received dozens, if not hundreds. And so if we believe this is not about misogyny, I think that is evidence to the contrary. And so bring your ire to me and leave my colleagues alone. So with that, we're going to conclude the Executive Director's Report and our comments, and we're going to turn now to committee reports. I believe Erica Chung is online. There she is. Erica, go ahead and proceed.
Good afternoon, President Calkins and Commissioners. I have five committee reports for you today. The R Board convened by Commissioners Philemon and Hasagawa met on May 26 and received updates on new art coming to the airport, as well as the relocation of other pieces. Senior Arts Program Manager Tommy Gregory also reported that a new arts technician will soon be hired to help with the maintenance of the collection. At the June 1 Waterfront and Industrial Lands Committee meeting convened by Commissioners Philemon and Hasagawa, State of Washington Tourism Executive Director David Blandford provided updates on his organization's work to promote tourism to Washington State, including the first-ever Responsible Outdoor Travel Summit, which is being co-produced by the port. Port staff also briefed the committee on the development of the protected bike path from Terminal 91 on Alaskan Way and down through East Marginal Way. Commissioners Philemon and Hasagawa provided policy guidance on each presentation. No recommendations were made to the Commission. On June 21, Commissioners Mohammed and Cho convened the Equity and Workforce Development Committee. Commissioners received an update on the port's anti-human trafficking efforts, as well as staff work on a three-year strategy to combat trafficking using funds secured in the 2022 budget process. Commissioners asked if bystander intervention training could be included as part of the airport badge renewal process as a means to increase the number of airport workers who are trained to help stop trafficking. Staff committed to fully evaluating this option and reporting back to the committee. Commissioners also received an overview of the Maritime Youth Career Launch Program strategic plan. Commissioner Mohammed noted her belief that the Maritime Youth Career Launch Program would benefit from a dedicated project manager funded using a portion of the program's previously allocated funds. Staff responded they will take Commissioner feedback into consideration in the development of the staffing plan. The Audit Committee was convened by Commissioners Cho and Mohammed on June 17 at the Pier 69 chambers. This was the first meeting with their new public member, Sarah Holmstrom. The committee received the 2021 financial statement audit results from Moss Adams, received updates on the 2022 audit plan open issues, and heard reports on operational and limited contract compliance audits. A non-public session was later held to hear a security-sensitive information technology audit. The Ethics Board met on June 22 in their The Ethics Board met on June 22 in their first organizational meeting since 2015. The Board of Staff introduced themselves, organized into a co-chair capacity, received an orientation of foundation documents and their role as board members, and received an overview of the current staff effort to review and make a recommendation on Code of Ethics amendments where they may be needed. It has been a decade since the code has been reviewed. An update of that review will come forward to the Commission's Governance Committee on July 28, when the project team is further along in its analysis and issues matrix. The Board of Ethics will next meet in mid to late August to begin development of a work plan. This concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. Commissioners, do we have any questions on the committee reports? All right. Thank you so much, Erica. The Commission will now accept general public comment from those who've signed up to speak on items related to the port. Written materials provided to the clerk will be included in today's meeting record. The clerk has a list of those prepared to speak. We are taking comments from anyone who has signed up to speak virtually, as well as from anyone who has joined us in the chambers. As the clerk calls your name, if you are joining virtually, please unmute yourself, then please repeat your name for the record. If you're on the Teams meeting and are also streaming the meeting on the website, please mute the website stream to avoid feedback. Comment time will be limited to two minutes per person. The timer will show on the screen for your viewing and will chime twice at the end of the two-minute period, at which time I'll ask speakers to conclude their remarks so that we may hear from our next speaker. Clerk Hart, may you please call the first speaker?
Thank you, Mr. Commission President. Our first speaker is J.C. Harris.
Parenthetically, I would suggest to the Commission to not conflate the broader Christian community with the recent Supreme Court ruling. As a practicing Catholic, I can assure you that the couple of billion of us have a variety of viewpoints on any number of issues. I would also tell you that the City of Des Moines' human services budget has never risen above 1% of general fund. And as my father-in-law would tell you, you cannot help people if you have no money. Funny thing is, see, I'm having seven teeth implants, and if I'd been smart, I would have gone to South Korea, because, you see, they have this really cool thing called medical tourism. And I'm struck by the fact that you run one of the largest airports in the world, and it's a $45 round trip to Montana and Idaho. So there may be a travel agent who could... Moving on, I received a letter from the mayor of Des Moines, Matt Mahoney, saying that my writing to the Aviation Commission to ask to provide comment on the Second Chance Port Package Update Program, that he had received notification from your staff that that was inappropriate, and that he had spoken to our staff to admonish me, even to the point of censure. He did not mention people. He just said, "People at the staff..." Okay, the port staff had, at the request of Cho and Mohammed, said that it was inappropriate for me to email you. I am airing this dirty laundry in public because I can tell you that Tina Orwell, Karen Kaiser, Adam Smith, lots of people really want to work towards some form of port package second chance initiative, which is a working thing at other airports.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris.
But I need five minutes of your time. And I would never tolerate staff blocking elected-to-elected conversation.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Clerk Hart, next speaker.
Yes, our next speaker is Dan Kent.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. I'm Dan Kent, co-founder and executive director of Salmon Safe, the West Coast environmental certification nonprofit based in Portland that certified Sea-Tac as the world's first salmon-safe airport. The Salmon Safe designation means that Sea-Tac is adopting land and water management practices that go beyond regulatory requirements, and that Sea-Tac is committed to further reducing its environmental impact over time. Salmon Safe is the only North American third-party certification program focused on water quality and watershed impacts from site operation and development. Salmon Safe has a long history of working in Washington State and particularly the Puget Sound region with projects that have ranged from University of Washington's main Seattle campus to Washington State Department of Ecology's campus to large-scale technology development with Vulcan, Expedia, Microsoft, and others. With respect to Port of Seattle, Salmon Safe has a long history of working with the maritime port across its network of parks and public access points. The Port of Seattle Park System is a longtime Salmon Safe-certified operation as well. Back in 2016, certification for Sea-Tac was based on an 18-month comprehensive assessment with our independent expert science team. That effort included an extensive review of airport environmental policies and programs, as well as onsite assessment of airport infrastructure, operations like fueling, washing, and de-icing, as well as stream restoration efforts, all with the focus on reducing downstream water quality and habitat impacts. Salmon Safe's year-and-a-half assessment project culminated with the certification report from our science team that included a wide range of restoration and water quality protection actions that have been fully implemented by Sea-Tac's environmental team in the time since certification was formalized. Salmon Safe certification is for a five-year cycle, then sites go back through the assessment process. Today, it's my understanding the Commission will review a contract to authorize the recertification assessment of the airport. On behalf of Salmon Safe, I encourage the Commission to continue Sea-Tac's environmental leadership among airports by seeking recertification and committing to further continuous improvement in actions to protect Puget Sound. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kent. Clerk Hart, next speaker.
Yes, our next speaker is Iris Antman. Iris, if you're on the phone, it's *6 to unmute.
Hi there, can you hear me?
We can.
Good afternoon, my name's Iris Antman, and I'm a member of Seattle Cruise Control. I appreciate your comments about Pride, Juneteenth, the Roe v. Wade reversal, and how in each of these events, people of color and other minorities are disproportionately affected. And I agree with your sentiments. So I find it even more incredible, not to mention how disappointed and discouraged I am, that you're unwilling to honestly and seriously address the biggest crisis in front of us, that of global warming caused by fossil fuel burning, and that you're not yet willing to wake up from the dream of cruising being good for Seattle. Cruising is a relic of market capitalism that we all know is destroying public and environmental health and the very viability of life on Earth. It's a nonessential activity, and you're aiming to increase cruise tourism from countries around the world, which will exponentially increase air traffic as well. The Green Corridor project has been promoted as a sustainable path forward. However, this project is counting on technology not yet in existence and probably won't be developed or at scale for decades, not to mention the idea of voluntary participation by cruise companies. You're in positions of terror, and you must seriously and emphatically address global warming. If we continue on the present course with little tweaks here and there and promises of things to come decades from now, you are squandering your responsibility. We can no longer think economic growth is more important than survival of the species, and that's what we're looking at. Business as usual will assure that large areas of the earth will be uninhabitable by the end of the century. We'll see water and food scarcity, increasingly frequent catastrophic weather events costing billions, costing billions of dollars, migrations of millions of refugees threatening global security, and the loss of biodiversity affecting food systems, and thus our very ability to survive. A few more sentences, please. We need big change now. We want an end to cruise in Seattle. You can be part of the solution, creatively developing regenerative, renewable, forward-looking businesses and industries that can grow and support new jobs on our waterfront. This is 2022, we're out of time. It's your job and duty, and you have the power to innovate and help create a livable future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Antman. That concludes our sign-ups today. Is there anyone else present or on the Teams call who didn't sign up but who wishes to address the Commission? Okay. At this time, I'll ask the clerk to please give a synopsis of any written comments that we've received.
Thank you, Mr. Commission President. Members of the Commission, we have only received one written comment today, coming from Jordan Van Vosd, who writes regarding weekend educational outreach to cruisers regarding climate impacts, the need to reduce greenhouse gas emissions now, not in 2050, regarding Seattle Cruise Control's op-ed regarding the Green Corridor, and asked the port to take steps to phase out cruise ships. And that concludes our written comments received today.
Thank you. Hearing no further public testimony, we'll move to the Consent Agenda. Items on the Consent Agenda are considered routine and will be adopted by one motion. Items removed from the Consent Agenda will be considered separately immediately after adoption of the remaining Consent Agenda items. We've heard of no items to be pulled today. At this time, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda items covering Items 8A, 8B, 8C, 8D, 8E, 8F, 8G, and 8H.
So moved.
Seconded.
The motion was made in seconded. Commissioners, please say aye or nay when your name is called.
Beginning with Commissioner Philemon.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Hasagawa.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Mohammed.
Aye.
Thank you. And Commissioner Hawkins.
Aye.
Thank you. There are four ayes for this item.
And with that, it passes. All right, we have four new business items today. Clerk Hart, please read the first item into the record. We'll then hear from Executive Director Metrick to introduce the item.
Thank you. This is Agenda Item 10A, Authorization for the Executive Director to Advertise and Execute a Contract for Up to Five Years, a two-year base contract with three one-year options of supplemental customer service operational staffing at Seattle Tacoma International Airport for a contract value amount not to exceed $50 million, $100,000.
Commissioners, this authorization is one piece of the strategy for achieving our long-term goals as they relate to customer service at SEA. Our new international arrivals facility adds over 45,000 square feet of space for our passengers. With that increased footprint comes a need for increased customer service staffing. This action will also add customer service staff at our TSA checkpoints, terminal, and landside facilities. Our presenters this afternoon are, we have our Managing Director of Aviation, Lance Little, just want to look down here, now I have to see if everybody's here, Jeff Hovat, Senior Manager Airport Operations, Landside Operations, and Laurel Dunphy, Director Airport Operations, Operations Director of that. So I'm going to turn it over to Lance to begin.
Thank you, Executive Director Metrick. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Once again, we are before you with seeking authorization for another piece of the puzzle. If you recall, at a recent study session, I outlined what the long-term vision is for the airport. We express this vision both in terms of a vision video, but also in terms of specific goals that we had, whether it was to get to a level of service optimal, five-star-rated airport, you know, minimum connect time through our international arrival facility. And also, if you recall, I outlined that we'll be coming back to commission over the next few years with approval, both on the capital development side, but also on the operational side. So we have some projects that we have completed already, the North Terminal Project, the international arrival facility, parking reservation, et cetera. But we have others that we're coming forth with. The C1 Building is going to be one of them, the South Satellite renovation, and the North Main Terminal. Another key piece of this puzzle is our staffing contract, which we're going to be speaking about today. It's, since the pandemic, we have seen a really change in the makeup of the passengers coming through the airport. We see a far more leisure travelers, for example, coming through the Air Force versus business travel. And that's just one of the reasons why you'll see this need, a continued need, but also an increase for staffing contract, which Laurel and Jeff will speak about. Executive Director Metrick mentioned earlier that we won the award for the best airport in North America, which is fantastic. It's going to come with a lot of accolades. It's really fantastic, yes. And we were recently upgraded to a four-star airport, one of only two larger airports in the United States. But along with the praise and the accolades, it comes with a lot of scrutiny, right? We're going to be under the microscope. And in order for us to meet the needs, you know, I remind folks, we're voted the best airport in North America, not the perfect airport in North America. So we still have a lot of work that we need to do. And for us to continue to elevate the level of service that we need to provide, we really need this staffing contract and agreement with us. If you guys had a chance to go out in the airport this morning, or maybe even now, it's probably still going on, I was out there about an hour ago, if you look at what's happening at the checkpoints, or even if you were at the international arrival facility last Friday, it's a preview of what's to come, not just this summer, but what's to come in the future. And we really need to have that staffing flexibility to make the adjustments and to meet the needs for our passengers. So without any further ado, I'm going to hand over to Laurel Dunphy and Jeff to give more details on this request.
Thank you, Lance, and good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, Executive Director Metrick. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. Today, we're seeking authorization for the Executive Director to advertise and execute a contract for up to five years of supplemental customer service operational staffing at SEA for the new international arrivals facilities, our checkpoints, and in landside operations. We're seeking a two-year agreement with up to three one-year possible extensions with a maximum value of approximately $50 million over five years. We're structuring the contract this way to allow the port flexibility to look at other solutions, such as the Seattle Airport Airline Consortium, as well as technology enhancements. When we last came to commission seeking authority for these services, it was July of 2020, and we had a much different mindset than we do today. We sought a two-year term for that contract without extension as we wrestled with the realities of the pandemic and the decline, particularly in our international traffic. We had also not opened our brand-new international arrivals facility, and we're now having a better understanding of the customer experience with both bags-first and the sloped walkway upon exit. Also, since we last bid this contract, we've welcomed Qatar Airways, Turkish Airlines, Finnair, and we are so excited about Air Tahiti Newey coming this fall. In the IF, we're seeing a need to provide more physical support from anyone, from a single parent to grandparents to just travelers with a whole lot of luggage they're coming with. Another change since we had this last contract is we've rolled out our SpotSaver program, and that has some requirements as well in the main terminal. The services we are seeking advance our port's century agenda in leading the region in tourism and business by promoting an efficient and pleasant customer process and experience at key touchpoints here in the airport. They specifically support our customer and efficiency goals and our desire to become even better and be a five-star SkyTrak airport. The staffing will enable the efficient flow of our arriving international customers, support our always-busy security checkpoints, and the flow of customers using ground transportation. These services complement the fantastic work that our pathfinders and our volunteers do on a daily basis, but they're in no way redundant. The flexibility provided by this type of contract will allow the port to handle seasonal and peak-hour surges, as well as the ebb and flow of customers as they move between locations here in the terminal. Our goal is to find a high-caliber, customer-focused contract for these positions that offer competitive wages and benefits. A labor harmony agreement... A labor harmony agreement will also be part of this requirement for the new services. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Jeff Hovat, our Senior Operational Manager for Airport Operations.
Yeah, thank you, Laurel. Good afternoon, Commissioners, Executive Director Metrick. In this presentation, I'll provide details about where the staff are currently in place and where we intend to enhance levels of service. The presence of the supplemental staff are not new, and I think we've been in front of commission several times before, with different iterations of a supplemental customer service agreement and those folks that support customers through the airport. Difference today is that we are welcoming thousands of customers in the new international arrivals facility, and that we continue to see growth, as you saw, as Lance mentioned in the terminal earlier. So we do have staff members that are out there now doing things like load balancing between checkpoints, make sure that folks just move through the facility as efficiently as possible. So focus on three main areas in the slide presentation today. Focus on international arrivals facility, our security checkpoints, and then ground transportation, which will include the employee parking supports. Next slide, please. The contract support areas, like I mentioned, terminal operations, where my team is, and the main terminal, we've got our queue management, load balancing, and then answering questions where these staff that are under contract now. But I want to emphasize the international arrivals facility because we have queue management needs in there that we anticipated, but there's an opportunity for us to be even more efficient by freeing up some of the CBP resources to be behind a podium where a customer can be taken care of there and make their way through very quickly. And then, of course, with TSA at the checkpoints and assistance through a customs review process by connecting folks with Bag Recheck, with the bags-first option that we have now, that customers can make that connection easily through the new IAF by rechecking bags. And the services that we employ today would continue under this new agreement. And then our landside operation, our parking garage, you folks are familiar with the parking garage, but in that area, we have rideshare. So think about Uber and Lyft. We have taxis that are there as well, and other forms of commercial ground transportation are there. We also support employee parking by deploying the contracted service to areas where we might need them to help queue up employee customers, both at the north employee parking lot, but importantly, at the main terminal in an area we call the service tunnel. Folks don't see that very often, but it's a great place for us to supply, provide some support for employees. Next slide, please. So a series of maps here, and I'll go through these fairly quickly, but I just wanted to be sure and illustrate for you that the team has thought very carefully about where people are today, and then where we would have additional staff to be able to enhance the services. So this is a map of the international arrivals facility, and at the top of the screen is, that's the bridge that comes from the S-gates and then continues through. And you can see where placement of the staff are now with the contract we have today. There's a supervisor, and that's one of the strengths of these agreements is onsite supervision has been very important, both for the employees, so they're doing the right things, but also to respond very quickly. When Laurel mentioned flexibility, it's a key part of this arrangement. We have someone who's at an oversized location, a lot of customers that come in with oversized bags, and then noted queue management. So we allocated four people for queue management upon opening. It's been very popular already. We expect it to be even more busy. And then, as people move through at recheck and on their way into the facility to take their next flight, or out of the facility to be welcomed to Seattle. Next slide, please. And our proposal, or four-star staffing, we call it, continue with the supervisor there with the oversized folks. We also introduce additional elements to support customers. There are people in the queue management area, and you'll show that there are six, I'll show that there are six there, so that's two more than we have. And this is a peak hour schedule that we would have here, so they wouldn't be there all the time. But effectively, the two people, additional people in queue management, replace customs and border protection staff that are there now. And so those CBP officers can go behind the podium, process customers more readily. We also have staff that are there for what we call referrals escort. So if someone gets referred to secondary screening at CBP, the staff that we employ could escort those folks over to that area and not take away time from the CBP officers to escort folks over. You'll also see here that we have a concept with porters. So as Laurel and Lance both mentioned, the customers coming in, some customers come that need more help than others, and it could be a family that needs help, it could be just someone who has a lot of bags. But the porters that we show there are the possibilities of us introducing with this contract, the opportunity for people to be there to help those customers to the customs and border protection booth, and then beyond that, when they come away from that area and then down the slope walkway into the main terminal. You might note there, too, we have one person that we show added for TSA queuing. There is a TSA checkpoint now as part of the new international arrivals facility. That's to facilitate the screening, or I should say, rescreening in this case, for arriving customers. It can go right into the secure side of our airport and make an easy connection within less than 75 minutes. Next slide, please. This is a bit of an eye chart, I understand, but it's a staffing overview. We simply put this together to show you what the differences are from current to our proposed four-star. Next slide, please. Again, with expenses here to give you a comparison where we had to now. And when you look at these numbers, the current staffing that we show here, we did indicate those with a calculation for what the anticipated cost per hour would be, so it was an apples-to-apples comparison as you consider authorizing this request for us today. Next slide, please. Everyone's familiar with the main terminal, TSA security checkpoints. In fact, I just left the area just before we came up here because we were doing some load balancing down there. So we have five security checkpoints in the main terminal. The ones that people see most are checkpoints two, three, and five. Then we have a TSA pre-check at one and four. So this current staffing, we have staff that are deployed to those areas that they manage queues to make sure people are in the right place, they can answer questions for customers, of course, and they load balance. So they're moving people from one checkpoint to the other in close communication to make best use of our facility. They also have onsite supervision. We would expect that in the next agreement as well. Next slide, please. So the staffing model that we're encouraging next includes a couple of different things. One thing you may not be familiar with, if you saw that there's one person for, we call pressurizing TDC. So TDC is the ticket document checker. And what we do is we have someone who's there, and they simply encourage or invite the customers to move along to see that TSA staff member that's there, just moves the line much quicker. And that's, really, there are not many changes being, you know, being recommended here, but those, pressurizing the TDC is important for us, as well as just enhancing our process. In the agreement that we have today, we're using the staff to assist with the virtual queuing, the SpotSaver program. This just calls it out in the contract, so we know that it's integrated in one agreement. The flexibility of using staff for different position makes a big difference for us. Next slide, please. And again, peak hour staffing comparison. Next slide, please. And the costs here, again, you know, apples-to-apples comparison of what we anticipate expenses to be. Next slide, please. In our landside group, again, this is the area that we have support staff for ground transportation and employee parking services. The big emphasis is on the app-based rideshare area. It's the most popular commercial ground transportation choice for our customers. We've utilized contract staff to help our folks move people through there safely and help the drivers, importantly, help the drivers find those folks that are looking for a ride and get them situated in the parking areas that are down there. These are very, you know, quick transactions that are all app-based, and again, the most popular form of ground transportation now. Our current staffing has a few of them down there, four in the, at the peak time in the Uber, Lyft, and rideshare area, then some others that can help folks, again, just navigate the facility a little bit better, make it easier for customers. Next slide, please. With four-star staffing, we call here, we add a little bit of emphasis there. This is really necessary for us. If our landside folks were here, they'd be extolling you to please do this because it's become so much busier. During the period when we were affected by COVID, there wasn't much activity in commercial ground transportation, but it's coming back very quickly. And next slide, please. And these are similar with the comparison, and the next, please. And the expenses. And the last slide, I believe. This is the total comparison that we would have. And again, as Laurel recommended, we went in really conservatively for this two-year fixed agreement we have now, anticipating that we would see additional growth at the airport, not knowing exactly what it would be. As we see customer demand come back, as Lance mentioned, the leisure customers, we'll also see a great deal of business travel returning as well. We just think that we've managed this part well and moving on to the next evolution of support for customers. And the next slide, please. And that's our, thank you. I'm very open to questions.
Thank you, Lance. Thank you, Laurel. Thank you, Jeff. Questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Hart?
Yeah, I have a question. Yeah, first of all, thank you for that presentation and for all the work that you and your team do to keep our airport running, especially in these times that are so busy. I went to go get my badge earlier today, and the badge line was long, as well as the TSA line, and for a second I said, "Where are the canines?" So maybe that's a, I should start with that question with Lance. I was wondering that as I was out there, but we could have a conversation off the dais later around that. My question is around Slide 12, the terminal map overview, where we have the ground transportation. Are these folks going to also be in the area with the taxi drivers?
They can. So we, depending on the flow of the operation, the contractor will have people on the third-floor area there. Typically, at the bottom of the escalators, they can direct customers to their ground transportation choice that they might have. So from where they are, they'd be, you know, taxi and flat rate off to the right there, or they could direct them across the lanes over to Uber and Lyft. And there also are shuttle operations down there, so Capital Airport, formerly Capital Airport, is in that area, just really to help the customer find what they're looking for.
That's right. I support this ask. The other question I have in regards to that is, when we contract out, do we require the contractor to go through some level of port-type training, or does the contractor provide the training for the employees?
The contractor has a primary responsibility for training. We approve their customer service plan for them, and then our partners in customer service are also developing a comprehensive customer service training plan for everyone, that everyone be required to go through. So I will note, you may have seen the folks that are in the garage today, the contract we have today and then the successor agreement as well has a minimum 10% WMB goal in it, WMB requirement in it. So the folks you see in the garage are part of our woman-owned business enterprise there, subcontracted with our primary.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Commissioner Hasagawa. Oh, any questions? Commissioner Phelan?
Thank you, and congratulations again on the SkyTrack's rating. I do want to note that one of the things I saw in the article referred to the shuttle to the light rail station. It was a good one. Was very happy to see that. One of those early things that was happy to get done. So I had a question about what happens during the off-peak hours? Where do these people go?
Well, I think that's part of the benefit of having a contracted relationship, is there are other services the contractor takes on. There could be a variety of things in the airport, but the Port of Seattle may not be the only business or company that the contractor has an agreement with. So employees may do other services in the airport. It could be wheelchairs, it could be aircraft cleaning, could be a variety of things.
Okay, but we're only paying for some, this $9 million, or this $5 million a year? I guess that's just the IAF. It's $9 million approximately a year is just really for kind of surge management?
Yeah, so what we're looking for here, Commissioner, is it's really a not-to-exceed spend level for us, a little over $50 million for a five-year term, but we intend to have our team manage that, you know, certainly to that plan. Want to be able, responsive to the growth we experienced. We're not there yet, but we have to replace the contract we have in place today because it does have a drop-dead at the end of this year.
But it's not just for the IAF.
Right, right. Well, I just saw the IAF number was five, but the total was nine, right? So clearly, the international growth hasn't come back full-blown yet, but, so when you say up to nine, so we are, we sort of seek deployment based on what we consider demand management, and so that's our call? How many? Absolutely, absolutely our call. So, yeah, we get information from the air carriers about loads, minimum two weeks in advance, for example. Get information from international carriers as well with inbound traffic. And so we look at that, and the team makes a calculation, works with the vendor today to manage hours around the anticipated volumes.
Yeah, it's never a perfect scenario with, you know, aircraft arriving late sometimes, and we have to make a decision, are we going to hold over our regular staffing when there are late, you know, evening flights are late, and we're planning, usually we wrap things up at 10 o'clock over in the IAF, but an aircraft might be late, and those customers need support. That's the decision, the management, we make on a daily basis to say, yeah, that's when we want to spend the dollars for the overtime or when we don't need to. So I think it's your question, where are those people going? Today, I think it's about 70% of the contract is a full-time employee and about 30% are part-time. And frankly, some of those IAF shifts really align nicely for, you know, like working moms during the school day, because our peak is, you know, 12 to about 1:30. We get a really big influx in the IAF, so there is some flexibility and some good that comes from having kind of that mixed staffing opportunities and the part-time, full-time flexibility.
So at the IAF, we look at basically a 10-person surge, looking like at the four-star rating in the, in the main terminal, is really just additional two people.
Yep.
So you're basically managing a dozen folk. It seems like a kind of a challenging thing, but it's only 12 people. So, but it's 12 people at $5 million a year.
Well, it's, we're looking at the peak staffing, so you're not seeing the staffing numbers for the rest of the day. So we just kind of are highlighting what we're providing during the peak operation. But, you know, we're starting international arrivals early in the morning and going until 10 o'clock at night, so we didn't show you those periods of time as well, but there's incremental staffing that we need there, because we will continue portering operations during the non-peak as well, just not to the same.
So it's not just 12. You're just showing on your chart what we're required for the peak period. There's the entire rest of the day that you still have to staff, but not at peak levels.
And I would add, Commissioner, so that 12 number you see there is the head count, so there are two shifts during a day to cover that entire operation with the functions that we showed you in the map.
Two shifts.
So the question is, the current, so the total bill here includes the current as well as the four-star?
We're moving from the current to the four-star, which is a higher level of staffing, and the total bill is the four-star level of staffing.
So the total bill.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. Thanks to that clarification.
Yeah, sorry.
And, but, to follow up on Commissioner Mohammed's question, you know, obviously, we're looking at your favorite subject, the cab contract, coming up again, and the question of queue management is one of the big gorillas in the room. Now, we're, all of a sudden, we're staffing up this, you know, somewhat guidance to the passenger, and I'm just wondering, so we're adding like three folks, something like that? And the question, whether it goes to cabs as well as TNCs, and I didn't sound like, you know, obviously, we want to make sure we service both, but I'm just trying to wonder whether there is an opportunity here to see that role as perhaps helping with the overall queue management issue?
Potentially, and I think it may, in terms of guiding customers directly where they're looking for their ground transportation options. So there are separate issues in that the curb management for taxis and flat rates, that's specific to that mode of transportation. The team that we're talking about here, they would be in place and very visible for a customer to find them and say, "I don't know where I'm going. I'm taking a whatever it is. I'm taking a shuttle. I'm taking an Uber, a Lyft. I'm taking a taxi." And these folks, we're asking for your authorization for today, would simply direct them that way. Once they got to the taxi stand, for example, that, the curb management staff, they're the ones that help the customers load in the vehicle and get them away from the curb as quickly as possible, you know, while calling in another vehicle to fill that space.
Okay, so I'm just wondering whether there may be some economies of scale, like, that this, these folks could provide maybe a little bit of both, or maybe for an additional person, you can get this, because it's obviously, it's a very expensive service for curb management to the degree that it can be done with fewer people than we're currently doing it, but providing an overall higher customer service. Anyway, I'd like to revisit that question because this contract is going to be a point of discussion here in the near future.
Very well. Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Hasagawa?
Congratulations on being the best in America. That's really exciting.
That's really exciting. And I love that we're shooting for even higher. That's wonderful. Jobs are good. Job growth is good. Jobs are opportunities. Can you clarify for me what a minimum goal is? And what happens if we don't hit a minimum goal? When you mentioned 10% WIMBY.
Sure. Well, they have to hit that. They have to. Yeah, this is a requirement, a requirement of our current RFP that folks are responsive to. It will be a requirement of the successor as well.
And if the goal is not hit?
Well, there are penalties. So we have liquidated damages, for example. There's a number of things. We work with our CPO group as well, basically for contract compliance.
Do you disaggregate your goals by gender or by race? Or is it overall either women or minority hire?
I'll answer this carefully. So when we, when we put the RFP together with our CPO partners, let's use WIMBY as the example, minimum goal for a women-owned business. So they need to demonstrate that that's the case. There isn't a requirement in the RFP for folks to be respondent with any other criteria. For example, we require them to meet all federal, state, and local laws, for example, training components. And there are other performance requirements we have, but they may not be about minority hiring. But they would be, in this case, about having a component of a women-owned business. That answer your question?
It does. Thank you. And I'm also wondering what the plan is for getting these workers to the job site as to not create greater congestion that could impact the customer experience as well.
Sure. I appreciate the question very much. So our current vendor, for example, they provide benefits to their employees as well as parking. And so that's one thing that we encourage them to do. We can't manage our business for them. We also have proponents of the vendors responding, vendors to provide public transportation assistance. There's a variety of things that we're going to ask for, for folks when we put the RFP out, just to help us inform. Like to make sure that the successor agreement gives us the ability to choose the best company to serve our customers, maybe not the cheapest contract that we could get, and encourage the type of treatment that we want to provide for those contracted employees.
Right. I think the idea is to keep people off the highways and off the roads, if possible. When you talk about public transportation assistance, you know, I'm thinking of ORCA cards. I'm wondering if there's something that the Port of Seattle can or should do to subsidize the cost since we can't force people or contractors to offer that to their employees.
We can consider that.
Thank you.
All right. Hearing no further questions. Oh, go ahead. Commissioner Mohammed?
Just one more question to Commissioner Haasigawa's point around, there's obviously a huge workforce shortage in the airport right now that a lot of the airline companies are facing. And so I'm wondering about like how, what's the bidding timeline would look like? And how does, is there strategies around that to help find the individuals you all are looking for? And obviously, paying things like ORCA cards and better working conditions and living wages help with that hiring?
Your observation is absolutely correct. And there is, there's a lot of competition right now for staff in the airport. So the vendor that we have today has had good luck in both recruiting and retaining employees, but there is competition. You'll note in what we anticipated for the billable expense rate for us, $30 to $32, that anticipates a pretty good wage that would go to the employee. We don't know exactly what it would be. And that's higher than we've seen before. And that's with us, myself, and the other managers in terminal operations, really just knowing what's happening with other vendors in the port and then ratcheting that up, you know, a bit to anticipate what folks would actually be paid, what would go in their check, but also the benefit package that may be offered through our RFP process. But I'm confident that we'll get a number of interested companies that have performed these services before and have a good network, working through airport jobs, for example, you know, or that they already have staff that are here that might, you know, move into a successor agreement.
Thank you. That concludes my question.
Right. Hearing no further questions for this item. Is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Clerk Hart, please call the roll for the vote. Commissioners, please say aye or nay when your name is called.
Beginning with Commissioner Phelan.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Haasigawa?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Mohammed?
Aye.
Thank you. And Commissioner Cockens?
Aye.
Thank you. You have four ayes, zero nays for this item.
And with that, the motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Clerk Hart, can you please read the next item into the record? And then I'll have Executive Director Metrick introduce the item.
Yes, thank you. This is Agenda Item 10B, Resolution Number 3804. Introduction and Adoption of a Resolution of the Commission of the Port of Seattle, Amending Resolution Number 3801 that authorizes the issuance and sale of intermediate lien revenue and refunding bonds, amending the maximum interest rate under which the Executive Director may approve the sale of the bonds from 4.5% to 5.5%. Consolidation of the readings per commission, bylaws, and rules of procedure is requested in the interest of an efficient bond sale.
Commissioners, earlier this year, you authorized the sale of revenue bonds within certain limits, including a maximum interest rate of 4.5%. Although that rate included the continuation of interest rate increases, rates have increased faster than most of the economists have anticipated. Moreover, rates have been very volatile, particularly in the municipal bond market. Recent projections for the bond sale have a rate close to 4.5% maximum, putting the bond risk at sale, at, putting the bond sale at risk. Therefore, staff is requesting the maximum rate be increased to 5.5% in order to provide some additional cushioning for selling the bonds. The presenter this afternoon is Elizabeth Morrison, Director of Corporate Finance. Elizabeth?
Good afternoon. This is a request to amend Resolution 3801 that authorized the sale of bonds. As Executive Director Metrick noted, interest rates have increased more rapidly and more steeply than anticipated, and markets have been very volatile. For example, when, when the bonds were authorized, the Federal Reserve forecast for their benchmark Fed funds rate by year-end would be 1.9%. In June, in the wake of the higher-than-expected inflation number, they increased that forecast to 3.4%. We function in the municipal bond market, which tends to be a smaller, less liquid market. And so is can be subject to more volatility than, say, the Treasury market. And so it's my recommendation that we increase that maximum to 5.5%. Resolution 3804 amends the original resolution for that increase in interest rate. The actual rate the bonds will carry will be the rate established by the market on the date of the sale. We're targeting a window between the next inflation release on July 13th and the next Federal Reserve Open Market Committee meeting late in July, July 26 and 27.
Which explains why we are seeking to do this introduction and adoption in one day, correct?
Yeah.
All right. Any questions from commissioners on this? All right. For this item, there's a request to consolidate the resolution from two readings into one, meaning the resolution would be adopted today. The request is made due to the timing of the bond sale. Consolidation to one reading requires unanimous consent from all commissioners. The bylaws allow written consent in this regard from absent members, which Clerk Hart has secured. Is there any objection to this consolidation? Hearing none, we'll consider the item for adoption at this time. Is there a motion and a second to adopt the main motion?
Some of...
Second?
The motion was made in second. And Clerk Hart, can you please call the roll? Commissioners, please say aye or nay when your name is called.
Beginning with Commissioner Phelan.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Haasigawa?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Mohammed?
Aye.
Thank you. And Commissioner Cockens?
Aye.
Thank you. Four ayes, zero nays for this item.
Thank you.
And with that, the motion passes. Thank you very much, Elizabeth. We got his, Commissioner Phelan asked if we needed to have Sam here for the vote. We did receive his written consent for the unanimous consent. Yeah. Thanks for pointing that out, Commissioner Phelan. All right. Clerk Hart, can you please read the next item into the record?
Yes. This is Agenda Item 10C. Authorization for the Executive Director to complete design. Use the General Contractor/Construction Manager. This is GCCM contracting method. Advertise and award a GCCM construction contract. Execute a pre-construction services contract, including enabling construction work and early work packages. Execute change orders over $300,000 where a cost is within authorized budget. Include and use a project labor agreement as part of the GCCM contract and use port crews in support of the primary fire station continuing operations preservation project at Seattle Tacoma International Airport for a request in the amount of $7 million out of a total project budget of $25 million.
Commissioners, Fire Station 1 serves our airport terminals as well as the surrounding community through mutual aid agreements. Our firefighters at Station 1 are on shift 24/7, 365 days a year. The facility that supports him, as you, if you've, many of you have seen it, is in need of improvements. Even though we have long-term plans, we have to look out for our firefighters now. We need this to meet the needs of our firefighters that are keeping us safe and healthy. This request will address the station's necessary upgrades to its HVAC system and working conditions in the station's dormitories. With us, the presenters are Frederick Robinson, Capital Project Manager, Fire Chief Randy Kraus, who's here, and I guess Captain Nudel, Fire Captain Chris Nudel is available on virtual. So with that, I'll turn it over to Frederick.
Thanks. Good afternoon. Thank you, Commissioners, and Executive Director Metrick. My name is Frederick Robinson, as was introduced. I'm the Project Manager for the Aviation Project Management Group. I'd like to walk you through a request for your approval and authorization of the Primary Fire Station Continuing Operations Preservation Project, or more simply, Station 1. Next slide, or sorry, do I even have my slides? There we go. Thank you. Station 1 is the primary fire station at our airport, sometimes referred to as the ARF, the Aircraft Rescue and Firefighting Facility. On the right of the screen, of the screen, you'll see Station 1 is located at the north end of the terminal, a little past our end concourse. On the left, you'll see a photo of the station itself. Called out here are the firefighters' dormitories, the focus of this project. Next slide, please. This project, as ED Metrick said in his introduction, is a tactical one. Our objective is to address an immediate shortcoming rather than defer, taking action, and wait for future development. The shortcoming is the building's mechanical system and dated design of the dormitories, both largely untouched since the building was built in the late 1970s. The project will replace the existing mechanical systems to improve system performance, air quality, and temperature control. It will also reconfigure the existing dormitories to provide improved accommodations for our firefighters. The two photos shown here are the existing dormitory and a typical bunk. The current bunk layout is divided into freestanding, divided using freestanding lockers and curtains. With the help of our designers and the coordination of the, with the Building Department and Fire Marshal, this project will improve that layout by creating bunk suites. Each bunk will have built partitions, a door, separate lighting, and Wi-Fi access to provide privacy and quiet for firefighters to work, sleep, recover in their own space on their own schedule. Next slide, please. The settled program for this project is listed here. While improving the dormitories is our focus, the largest component of work will be the replacement of the existing dated mechanical system along with the associated electrical systems at the station. Yesterday was hot. The hottest day of the year so far, and the summer is just getting started. Yesterday, even with the station's mechanical systems working as best they can, it was 93 degrees in the station. At 1:00 AM, it was 85 degrees in the firefighters' dorms. You'll see, as you look down the other bulletted items, the firefighters' break-room kitchen range is included here. That's because it is interconnected with the mechanical system. And at the bottom of the slide, this project includes two port sustainability framework initiatives. The initiatives will contribute to the port's larger operational utility goals. Next slide, please. Our target schedule reflects our intention to use the GCCM contracting method to deliver this project. For those that might know, GCCM, General Contractor/Construction Manager, or outside of Washington State, which is what is generally referred to as Construction Manager-at-Risk, allows us to hire a contractor based on qualifications and experience, ahead of our design being complete, so that our design team and our contractor can work together on the project. Using this delivery method also means that there will be some wiggle in our schedule as the team works together to complete the design. It is our intent to bring together the best design solution and inform constructibility assumptions and better the third-quarter substantial completion date shown here. Next slide, please. The trick to bettering our target schedule is the current construction environment. In this current construction environment, is pairing our contractor with our design team during design development. The period under the GCCM contract structure is what we refer to as the pre-construction phase. We anticipate heavy participation by our contractor as the larger project team works to complete our Station 1 design. Specifically, and it is as an example shown here, we expect to work with the GCCM's input to settle the best solution on construction phasing that will have the least impact to fires' operations and support the best achievable execution of the work. We anticipate a pre-con effort of approximately $2 million and a max of approximately $15 million. Next slide, please. We've set our budget for Station 1 total project at $25 million. Our funding request today is for a portion of that total project budget, $7 million, to build the project team, move our design and pre-construction effort forward, and kick off enabling and early works efforts. Approving this request will give our team the tools needed to successfully launch this project. That is the end of my presentation. If you have any questions, Chief Kraus and somewhere on the internet, I have Captain Nudel. We'll be happy to answer the best we can.
Any questions from commissioners? Go ahead, Commissioner Haasigawa? Oh, no. All right. Commissioner Phelan?
Well, you know what? The question I was going to ask is, you know, moving on to this project before we heard the end of the other one was my initial question. Are we getting close to Fire Station 2? And that's truly, do we have a schedule for that one?
Well, looking right now, well, I'll be glad to talk about Fire Station 2, is that the West Side Fire Station, and Chief, you can feel free to jump in on this, is that we're near completion, but we found some items that were going to impact the...
Excuse me, Mr. Executive Director, Mr. Commissioner President. We've lost the call. Aubrey's just informed me, so we need to take a quick pause and regain our teams.
All right. Why don't we take a five-minute recess then while we're figuring out the tech?
Apologies for that. Thank you.
Apologies for that. Thank you.
Yeah.
Wow, it's a light meeting. It shouldn't go long. Wonder if we could let public comment, but not just the cruise control. Can't anybody else discover us?
Thank you, Tyler. Commissioner Hawkins, we are back up whenever you're ready.
All right, Clerk Hart, are we, are we back up and running?
We are back up and running. Thank you for your flexibility and indulgence there. I appreciate it.
All right, and we, I think we're in the middle of answering a question about Fire Station Two, West Side Fire Station.
Yeah, so I was just going to provide the update that, and Chief can feel free to jump in on this, but I was going to say the major construction has been completed, but there are some follow-on projects in the individual rooms where the firefighters will be, and we don't want to interrupt them or disrupt them in that. So we want to complete the work first before we move in. And I know the firefighters have all been very patient in awaiting this quality facility that we're going to deliver. And right now, the target date is September for the move in there. We're hoping to invite everyone to a, to a ribbon-cutting ceremony, and that'll be a great date when we get everyone in there. Chief, if you want to add to that?
Yeah, just one quick comment, just to thank local 1257 Union President Chris Nuttall is on teams and available. They've been very patient throughout this whole process, but Labor Management's been working hand-in-hand on this. They understand the complexities. And I also want to reiterate, no fault of our port staff, the project team and program management did a phenomenal job being transparent. We did have a couple of issues and hiccups along the way with some contractors and some contractor work, but Labor Management are in agreement right now to pause moving into it until all that work is complete, and that's where we're at right now, sir.
Thank you for that. I just feel obligated to make sure that I hear from both you and Mr. Nuttall, that make sure that there's still that great patience is being not tested too far, and thank you.
Yeah, Chris, Captain, if you want to go ahead and say anything?
Sir, yes. Thank you very much. Sorry I'm in wall-to-wall in a firefighter convention. I tried to find the quietest room possible, but I would really appreciate your support. The HTRX system is a desperate need of improvement. It's very difficult to go on an alarm and respond on a call, put on all your PPE, and then come back to the station. It's 85 degrees and you never really feel like you're getting any rest. So we're looking forward to these improvements, for sure.
Thank you. I assume that originally we were extending the life of this and assuming that SAMP was going to kick in and that it was going to be replaced sooner. Is that why the, so what, I understand that the construction life of this is something like 10, 15 years, but do we, do we have an expectation of how long we're actually planning on using it, or is that still very uncertain?
Well, I'm going to tell you my interest. My interest is the firefighters are facing this here and now. We have, we have the big master planning in the, for the SAMP and those projects, but in through the discussion, we don't want to defer these upgrades because we're not sure. And I've been on the other end of this, where you wait for intemperory things or other things. You want to advance this work now for the health and safety of our firefighters, and I think it's a worthwhile investment to do that because we don't know that planning, and we don't want to depend on plans if they're far out into the future. I have confidence in the far plans in the future, but I want to take care of this now.
I, just to add, I think that one thing that we don't take into consideration is the opportunity for planning time. So these are health and safety upgrades that we need to have in the building, and as we address those, and as, whenever SAMP does come, then it gives us really, really solid time because the firefighter's in a, in a place that's more habitable, safer, they get their rest, rehab, in a, in a climate-controlled environment. I mean, as Rob and mentioned, this building was built in 1979. It was an open bay building with men and women sharing an open bay. We put, I inherited in 2010, I became the chief, but before that, they put lockers in there to separate the sleeping areas to give some privacy with the curtains. So it's still 1979 space that's been reconfigured, but we need to update that configuration so that they can actually get the rest that they deserve, have lighting and, right now, the bay, because it's two open bays, at 2:00 AM in the morning, if there's an aid call when two people need to go out, all 18 are woken up with lights on and the alarms. What this configuration that Robyn's proposing is going to give each individual room that ability, so it's going to really provide a much better quality of life and a safer environment for our firefighters than what we currently have. But I also just want to reiterate planning time. That's something that really we don't talk about. We don't know when SAMP and when that, how, what the useful life is, but by doing this, you can extend that useful life significantly if need be to meet whatever those SAMP requirements are.
I completely support this. It's just, I don't know why we just didn't start here. I mean, we already, it's not, it's not like we didn't know this building was a 70s vintage, and I guess the heat wave maybe put a head on it, or what was the...
I thought about what I would say specifically to you, sir, in this, in this moment. When I first got here in 2010, we had a project, and Wendy would remember this, we had a project for $5 million to do exactly what Robyn has suggested. It was way under scope, way under, it wasn't the right planning and knowledge that went into that. Robyn and his team have it right. This is what we needed, and if I do regret anything at this moment is that we didn't push that harder back then in 2011, 2012.
Okay, well, I wasn't on the commission, so I won't take responsibility, but the, it is $25 million, which is not trivial for two bedrooms, obviously HVAC, et cetera, but I do see that MII, it didn't pass the muster, right? So we're doing this through a different funding means, right?
We are. We're doing this as a discretionary project, as allowed by SLOA, which means that MII formal acceptance isn't required.
And I was just wondering, is there any insight there that it seems to be, it is a fundamental issue to have our emergency responders able to do their job, and why, why couldn't this have passed MII?
If I could, the reason we're using discretionary this time is actually in the life of SLOA, it's a contingency that we're always able to draw on, but you want to keep it for when that problem evolves. We're now getting close to the end of SLOA, so it seemed a better opportunity to take advantage of using that contingency for this purpose.
All right, then. Godspeed. All right.
Commissioner Hasegawa? Or Commissioner, no, no questions?
So, I mean, what you're asking for are clearly necessary. I guess, and it's bare minimum, why are we not asking for more for this facility? We talk about how hot it is. This is clear, I'm looking at the aerial photo, and it's the middle of a concrete desert. Why not the double-pane windows? Why not a green roof? Why not some, a little bit of landscaping and a little bit of greenery that you do have here to just sort of improve the overall facility?
I hope that you don't jinx me and I don't come back asking for more money. Our intent here is really, as we said a whole long, to make this very tactical because of what's going on with SAMP and other future developments. We didn't want to overinvest in this facility because we don't know how long it's going to be there, but we do want to make sure that we take care of the firefighters and deliver the basic needs they have to have. And that's why you'll see us targeting really, one, the mechanical system, and for that mechanical system, we're really looking for it to deliver to the dormitories. The rest of the station sort of gets the accidental benefit of getting improved HVAC, but we're really doing it to improve the living conditions for the firefighters in the dormitories.
And if I might add, I mean, in working with Chris and his labor team, it's, we're realistic, and this is bare minimum of what we really believe that we need to provide a healthier and a safer environment because, and I'm going to kudos out to Chris because he's been phenomenal, understands strategically our role and how, and our needs at the airport in and amongst all the other, it's complicated and there's, everybody's demanding, right? Different thing, new funds and all of that. We think this is the right project at this time to meet those needs, but we appreciate, and those upfront were considered. I mean, what could we do? And we've decided on this because it will make a better environment for them.
No further questions.
All right, thank you. I had an opportunity three or four years ago to visit with, with you, Chief, and then also with the leadership of the firefighters and then get a tour of the facility. And even at the time, it does feel like, you know, vintage South Satellite, vintage Old North Satellite, like it's ready for upgrades. And, and I know that, you know, as you have mentioned, the, the interest was in balancing fiscal stewardship around, well, we're, you know, we have plans in place that look to an entire replacement of this facility, but at the same time recognizing that now, as schedules have slipped related to COVID, it's appropriate to reinvest in this facility and really make sure that our firefighters are taken care of in the interim. So I'm supportive of this, too. With that...
Commissioners, do you think, I know there are some questions about the level of investment in the planning and those, and I'd like to have Wendy Ryder of Security to over, to kind of talk about that and the long-range planning. And Lance, I guess you want, Wendy, you'll be...
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you so much, Commissioners. Wendy Ryder, Director of Security and Emergency Preparedness. I, too, want to thank the firefighters for, one, I'm excited for them to get a new station on the West Side, and, two, to get an upgrade on this facility. One of the things we did not mention is that part of the master plan is a new facility that replaces this facility. And so when we did talk to the firefighters, they're great stewards to understand what do we need to do to get, get through until we do get the new facility with the master plan. So I just wanted to make sure you guys understood that there is a brand-new facility that's the main facility in the horizon. So this is really just to help us get through, and thank you to Chris Nuttall as well to really look at what do we just absolutely need to get by with. So thank you so much.
Appreciate that. I am conscientious of schedules here right now, and so I want to, if we can, I'd like to see if we've got a motion and a second for this.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it is moved and seconded. Clerk Hart, can you please call the roll for the vote? Commissioners, please say your name when your name is called.
Thank you. Beginning with Commissioner Felam.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Hasegawa.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Mohamed.
Aye.
Thank you. And Commissioner Hawkins.
Aye.
Thank you. There are four ayes, zero nays.
With that, the motion passes. Thank you all for your presentation. If there are other questions that are looming, Commissioners, please feel free to direct them to Steve. Otherwise, if there's any looming questions for you all, we'd love to get responses to those as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, we're going to move on to the next item. Clerk Hart.
Yes, thank you. This is Agenda Item 10D, Commission Determination That a Competitive Process is Not Appropriate or Cost-effective, Exempting the Contract from Competitive Process Consistent with RCW 531902O, An Authorization for the Executive Director to Execute Contracts with Salmon Safe, a Nonprofit Organization, in an Amount Not to Exceed $200,000 for the Port Salmon Safe Certification.
Commissioners, as you heard in the public comment, we have Salmon Safe certification programs for both aviation and maritime, and this one is about our contract for our aviation. Seattle Tacoma International Airport has been Salmon Safe certified since 2016. This is an environmental certification program offered exclusively by the nonprofit Salmon Safe Organization for the West Coast that certifies airport operations and stormwater habitat management programs, protects local streams, Puget Sound, and their salmon populations. And the presenter is, looking down to make sure you're there, Sarah, Sarah Cox, Interim Director of Aviation and Environmental Sustainability. Sarah.
Thank you, Executive Director, and good afternoon Commissioners. As noted, I'm seeking authorization on two items. Next slide, please. The first item is to exempt the Salmon Safe Certification Contract from the Competitive Process. You know, this is a unique certification where the competitive process doesn't apply. And then secondly, the, to execute the contract for Salmon Safe Renewal Certification for a not-to-exceed amount of $200,000. And we are requesting to provide flexibility with option years to move forward with four, five-year cycle certifications. And when we go through the next five-year certification, if this is approved, we will be reaching out and evaluating that competitive process and make sure there aren't any other entities out there providing this type of certification. Next slide, please. So why Salmon Safe? So the Salmon Safe Certification core requirements really complement the Port Sentry Agenda Goals and Strategies for Stormwater Management, Habitat Restoration, and Water Conservation. This third-party accreditation assesses and certifies the airport's watershed and landscape management policies and programs on a five-year cycle. And this cycle also includes annual assessments. And then, as Executive Director noted, I would like to include that Maritime Parks is also Salmon Safe certified, and these certifications really, you know, validate our success and innovation towards land stewardship, land stewardship and habitat in our communities. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So the airport Salmon Safe Certification, as I noted, acknowledges our programs to protect water quality and salmon habitat. And some of the key initiatives that we achieved over this last five-year cycle are the application of stormwater infiltration techniques that provide multiple benefits of avoiding and reducing the amount of runoff that we have into our adjacent creeks, as well as treating 100% of our stormwater that leaves the airport facilities. We've also implemented conservation efforts to reduce the amount of potable water used at the airport through rainwater capture and use of high-efficiency fixtures. Next slide, please. So as you can see, the airport manages a lot of water from our facilities. For every inch of rain, we have 11 million gallons or so that runoff into our adjacent creeks. Participating in this certification program is a way that we acknowledge our advancements for habitat restoration and water quality and helping improve our habitat. So in follow-up, I'm requesting authorization to exempt this certification contract from the competitive process, and then, secondly, to execute this contract for not to exceed amount of $200,000. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Sarah. Questions from Commissioners? I can't imagine Commissioner Felammon would not have a question about a salmon program.
Salmon? What's that?
I know.
So, so I understand there's kind of a unique certification process of the non-competitive bid and $200,000. This is not a highly controversial request. And the idea that we would continue to make progress and hold ourselves accountable to that progress, not controversial. I then looked at, what does it mean to be Salmon Safe? And this voluminous document in front of me is, has all these performance criteria and stuff like that. And then, what was intriguing to me, though, was at the end was the Appendix F, which was the verification form. And, you know, for folks like us that are, you know, reading impaired for volumes, that the idea that this could be like a dashboard, that, you know, like, how are we, how are we doing? Where could we be supportive for improvements? Obviously, there are many criteria, which I'm very happy to see. Condition, it says up to condition nine or 10, but each one is rather involved. So, and looking at the thing, it says whether we meet or don't meet, or if we're in process. And then the verification of whether we cleared it with some narrative. I don't see where we are from this five-year period. I see the blank form for the future, but it would just be really great if, you know, in reauthorizing, knowing where we stand today would be like our, looking for our dashboard of all of our future efforts and budgeting, that we know, well, we're gonna have to do something more for whatever retention ponds or detention ponds or whatever the case may be. So I don't really have a sense in looking at this certification, other than we get to put a salmon on our fence, or whatever it is, that it could be that much more instructive for us to be good stewards. And like I said, there's nothing about the request that I don't support. I just always want more. And so, to the degree that you can maybe, we can get maybe a presentation of what our salmon certification meant, you know, a memo or something. And, and I don't know, I know with Green Marine, you have to do more the next year. You have to do, it's not like you just do this in order to maintain your certification, then you have to continue to advance. And so I don't know whether this is a static thing, or whether we're setting newer goals, that sort of thing. So I'm all for it. I don't know that much about it, so if you can maybe help with a memo or something like that.
Sure, absolutely. Absolutely. And, you know, the certification, because it is five years, you know, some of the implementation components are multi-year, like, for example, the rainwater harvesting at North Satellite, those efforts. And then some we do accomplish, you know, within a year, like, for example, our construction standards for construction stormwater runoff. You know, we set that, and then we maintain and report on our success of implementing those standards on our construction projects. So absolutely, we can provide some updates and communicate our success of implementing the certification.
Thank you.
I believe that's it in terms of questions today. Thank you so much, Sarah. And with that, I'm gonna ask Clerk Hart to call the, oh, sorry, we need a motion and a second on this.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it has been moved and seconded. Clerk Hart, can you call the roll?
One moment, please. And just noting for the record that Commissioner Mohammed has exited the room. So beginning with Commissioner Felammon.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Hasegawa?
Aye.
Thank you. And Commissioner Calkins?
Aye.
Thank you. Three ayes, zero nays for this item.
And the motion passes. All right, we are now moving to Item 11, Presentations and Staff Reports. Clerk Hart, please read the next item into the record.
Yes, this is Agenda Item 11A, Port of Seattle Police Department 2021 Annual Report. Welcome, Chief.
Commissioners, our next item is a briefing on the Port of Seattle Police Department's 2021 Annual Report. What you hear today is an overview of the department and the work of our commission officers and support staff to protect the traveling public, port staff, workers, and all port facilities, from Shilshoe Bay Marina at the north to Seattle Tacoma International Airport at the south. Interim Chief, Interim Chief Mike Villa, sorry, I'm kind of spitting that out, will provide an overview of the department, provide statistics, highlight the operational divisions, mutual aid activities, and progress to date implementing recommendations from our policing assessment. We can all be proud of the high standards of performance of our police department and fulfilling their challenging and unique role here at the port. And also, this is us building on our transparency with the public that we've been doing over the last few years to increase our transparency of all things related to our policing. We're working together to identify improvements to our policing practices and to achieve our goals of equity and inclusion in all that we do. Today's briefing on the 2021 report is also a way to honor our police department's various teams and their very valuable work. So, and I'd like to, and I guess we also have, Maren Burnett is also, she be presenting afterwards, I guess? Maren, there you are, right there. I can see, are you?
I don't know if this is on, but I'm just helping him out with questions. About the paint.
Okay, very good. So with that, I'll turn it over to Interim Chief Villa.
Good afternoon, Commissioner, Commissioner President Calkins, Commissioners, Director Metrick, Port of Seattle staff and visitors. It's my pleasure to be here today and present our 2021 Police Department Annual Report. Next slide, please. This next slide just gives a quick highlights of what we're going to cover. So you'll see that there, the guiding principles, some of our, we'll talk about some of our department teams, partnerships that we have, community engagement, and our 2022 goals. Next slide. So our vision reflects that we are not a traditional police department. We do have here unique capabilities and responsibilities that you will see as we go through the presentation. So our vision is to be the nation's finest port police. Our mission is that we support the Port of Seattle's mission. It's important for us to have that as part of our mission, that we're aligned with the Port of Seattle mission, and then that we fight crime and protect and serve our community. And our part in reaching the port's mission is, is just that, what I just commented about, fighting crime, protecting, and serving our community. Our guiding principles you see as leadership, integrity, and accountability. You know, a key part of leadership is that we are modeling the way, integrity that we are honest and ethical, and accountability for our actions. And that really starts from my position as the interim chief, down to every person in the police department. Next slide. This next slide lists our four core functions. We have a, one of our functions, to have a visible presence, and that is that we would deter crime and provide public safety and services. Traditional, also that we are, we perform traditional law enforcement functions, just like any other municipal law enforcement agency might do, such as traffic enforcement, responding to and investigating the crimes such as burglaries, thefts, or assaults. But additionally, we respond to calls such as suspicious devices or threatening persons that could affect continuity of operations. For example, in 2021, you know, we had four suspicious item incidents that caused us to shut down portions of the airport, and our teams quickly isolated those incidents, to resolve them safely and in a timely fashion so that we could continue on with continuity of operations. And then we also train and equip our team members to respond, mitigate, stabilize potential acts of terrorism, unusual occurrences. We work with aviation and seaport security teams, the Coast Guard, other entities to ensure that our collective capabilities and leverage resources so we can perform this function when the time comes. And the next slide, you'll see just quickly our organizational structure. And I do want to take some time, or just real briefly, just to thank Senior Administrative Assistant Jen Robinson. She really put a lot of work into this presentation, and so I want to take time to do that. And the next slide. So on this, on this next slide, we're gonna play a video here in just a moment, and it's really a great introduction to the police department. It was produced by the International Association of Chiefs of Police. The IACP is the largest police association in the world with 31,000 members from over 160 different countries. Their annual conference draws over 15,000 attendees, and oftentimes, the President of the United States is one of the keynote speakers. And so the Port of Seattle, IACP reached out to us, and they asked us if we wanted to be a featured agency during this year's conference. Actually, it was last year. Last year, they were virtual. So because this year it's in person, we're gonna be featured agency actually twice, once virtually, and then also in person. And so they'll be playing this video at the IACP conference, and I wanted to give the Commissioners an opportunity to watch that video before it's played at the conference. The Port of Seattle Police Department is a phenomenal police department. We provide all the services of a traditional municipal police agency, but we're unique in that we also serve and protect the critical infrastructure of Sea-Tac International Airport.
Tech problems, apologies for that.
As well as the seaport along the Seattle waterfront.
All right, let's take this down and restart. The problem is generally, teams will kick out our sound that way. So let's see if we can bring it back up again.
It's one thing you can always count on is some technical difficulties.
This meeting has been fraught with them. There's just been a lot behind the scenes. There we go, and hopefully we've got sound back. No sound opera, you're gonna have to do it.
The Port of Seattle Police Department is a phenomenal police department. We provide all the services of a traditional municipal police agency, but we're unique in that we also serve and protect the critical infrastructure of Sea-Tac International Airport, as well as the seaport along the Seattle waterfront. We have an international customer base, and so this really requires our officers to have an enhanced customer service orientation. But then, secondly, the fact that we have to protect such critical infrastructure here in the northwest, really nationally critical infrastructure, it requires our officers to have specialized training, specialized equipment, and really specialized personnel in order to protect that critical infrastructure.
We have one of the only practicing K-9 air sent groups in the state of Washington. They're very unique in that they are able to track moving targets. So if there's a threat or suicide bomber in the airport, our K-9s are able to track it to source. We have eight air sent teams and six stationary teams, which means they search stationary objects. We have bikes. We do daily surges with both our bikes and our K-9 officers. Our BDU techs accompany our K-9 officers on their daily routes. So I believe working collaboratively with our internal and external partners is important because they offer different expertise. So if we have a problem-solving event or issues that are coming on, they're able to provide their skill sets, which maybe we don't have at the police department, which allows us to provide a more holistic and focused approach on tackling issues that may arise at the airport.
Unique challenges for the Port of Seattle are bomb squad. Working here at International Airport is obviously the number of people that we have that come through the airport and making sure that their travel is smooth and safe when we have maybe suspicious device or something that's suspicious in nature that causes a disruption to travel. It's a very fine balance of doing things safely and effectively and doing it in a timely manner. These are our two robots that we have. This is a smaller one that's able to fit on aircraft and buses. This is our larger one that we use outdoors primarily. They allow us to start remote and stay remote to help save lives.
So what makes us unique for a maritime police department at the waterfront is, not only do we handle normal day-to-day 911 calls, but we're also responsible for the safety and security of the cruise ship industry that comes into the city of Seattle. We're responsible for the security and the continuity of operations of the cargo terminals that are moving throughout the Port of Seattle. And we have the maritime boat and dive team that can assist with those functions, as well as our patrol officers.
So often, we respond to persons that are in crisis and are not in their best moments. And so it is really important, when we have those opportunities as police officers, to show that human side. And if it's just helping someone with a bag getting to their destination, or if it's helping someone who is in crisis, someone who is homeless, a transient in the airport, there are so many great opportunities here to show that side and to connect with people on that level.
I love law enforcement in general. I love talking to people, communication, and sometimes we see people at their lowest times. My job is to stay calm, stay patient, articulate myself, and also help them get the resources that they need. Again, it's also about treating people like the way I would want to be treated if I was contacted by law enforcement.
There's many things that we do to maintain the best standards with the department. One is that we continue to maintain FOIA accreditation. Another is that we seek to leverage training and products that are produced by professional organizations like the IACP. We are dedicated and committed to ensuring that our officers receive frequent and relevant and top-notch training that will ensure that we are then practicing those best standards.
So I'm most proud of the people that I work with at the Port of Seattle Police Department. Over the last year and a half, policing has been very trying, and our officers come to work every day. They continue to provide that most care and high customer service to the stakeholders and citizen, which they've all been accustomed to here.
We are going to continue to grow. As travelers come back somewhat post-COVID-19, we're seeing a significant spike in travelers. And as the airport and the seaport continue to grow, we will continue to grow. This next year, in 2022, all of our frozen positions are going to be unfrozen and will be reinstated, as well as, it looks like we're gonna be adding additional personnel in 2022. So thanks, thanks for playing that. One of the things I love about that video is I'm able to bring a bunch of my staff here and have them speak to the department. And it is, I almost feel like I was bringing you all into the department just for a few moments there. And so anyway, I think they did a really good job in the video and wanted the Commissioners to be able to see that. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So sorry, the Operations Bureau, that video touched on all of these teams other than the support, the traffic support specialist, but I certainly did not want to leave that team out. They are critical to our mission. They perform a valuable function of directing traffic on the drives and they're also often our first set of eyes and ears when it comes to our overall security footprint here at the airport. Next slide. So some stats and you'll, by the way, you'll find all of this also and more so in our annual report, which is online and I'll probably touch on that again, but that's online. You can go to the website, our police page and you'll find it online and there's more information there. But so again, just kind of pulling out some of the highlights. In 2021, our calls for service were almost back to our 2019 level of over 106,000 calls for service now. Of those calls for service, 40% of those are officer-initiated and of the officer-initiated calls, most are area checks, traffic control details, K-9 emphasis and things like that. The transportation, you'll notice on the graph to your right, the transportation security violations, those are our top call for service and these include firearms at the checkpoint. We had 69 during 2021. Other weapons, other contraband or issues at the checkpoints. We're required as part of the airport security plan to have a five-minute response at any time to those checkpoints. Next slide. So I mentioned the Operations Bureau and this is, then we have two bureaus in the Police Department. The other one is the Services Bureau and it's overseen by Deputy Chief Mark Thomas. The Services Bureau supports the department's operations and manages all the administrative components of the Police Department. Next slide. And I'm going to touch on that, these units that I'm going to touch on now all work within that Services Unit, Services Bureau, excuse me. So the Office of Professional Accountability, this is staffed by Kyle, Sergeant Kyle Yoshimura. He works directly with the Chief's office. His primary function is to investigate alleged employee misconduct. He works closely with the Port of Seattle Legal Department, Human Resources, Workplace Responsibility, Labor Relations, External Relations, and our Public Disclosure Department. He monitors and analyzes use of force incidents and that's another report that we put on our website. He conducts an analysis to identify and if necessary, correct bias-based policing. So we do that every year as well. And then Kyle, he was an integral participant in the policing assessment that was conducted over the last year and a half, two years. Next slide. Our Criminal Investigations Division, one of the, one of the challenges that we had and where this unit was very effective this in 2021 was the catalytic, the theft of catalytic converters, which really was, is a nationwide problem, problem in Washington State, problem on our properties as well. Most commonly Toyota Priuses were having their catalytic converters cut out of them and stolen. And we had over 150 of those incidents here on our properties, both at the seaport and the airport. And the thieves will sell those catalytic converters for upwards of $2,000 apiece. I do want to report that in October of 2021, our detectives, they placed a bait car outfitted with an alarm in a location that they had deemed highly likable or likely, excuse me, to attract catalytic converter thieves. Within 10 hours of the placement of the vehicle, thieves had placed a jack under it and cut out the catalytic converter. The alarm activated, putting in motion a series of events which led to their successfully capturing four subjects. The vehicle contained, the vehicle that the subjects were in contained three catalytic converters, including the one from the bait car and several tools of the trade. The suspects admitted, good detective work, the suspects admitted to stealing the catalytic converters that night, but also they admitted to being prolific catalytic converter thieves. This was a coordinated effort by detectives, patrol officers, our dispatch, and not surprisingly, after that arrest, our catalytic converter theft significantly dropped. And that's what we find oftentimes with these types of thefts is that it's a small percentage, it's small groups that are committing these thefts. That was a very significant arrest for us back in October. Next slide, please. Our Office of Professional Development ensures that we meet Washington State, excuse me, we meet the Washington State training requirements from the CJTC Criminal Justice Training Center. So we're required to have 24 hours of in-service training every year. Our officers average 70, so we're well above that average training. We're also required to conduct de-escalation training, crisis intervention training. Entry-level officers are required 720 hours of academy training when they're hired. The police reform in 2021 created a heavy lift for team members, both with our Office of Professional Development and OPS, which I'll touch on next. And I'm, I was very proud of our team, their response to that. They developed an eight-hour initial training class and ensured that all of our officers were trained. Brian Maxi was one of the consultants with 21CP that did the assessment. He attended those classes as well as de-escalation training. He gave us very high marks as far as our training goes. They also, this team also coordinated a legal update later in the year to follow up to that eight-hour class and they pushed out online training throughout the year. Just on the legal update too, it wasn't just for that, but we do a legal update every year so our officers are refreshed on legal issues. Next slide. The Office of Professional Standards is supervised by Sergeant Molly Kearns. This office ensures training reconciles with policy and fulfills accreditation requirements. Lexible, what you see up there, that's the, we use Lexible policies. And so what that does is it ensures that our policies are in accordance with state and federal law, best practices. It also allows for custom content. 40% of our policy is custom content, so we get the best practices. We make sure that our policy is according to law, but then being a unique agency like we are, we need to customize a lot of those. But we do that customization without sacrificing the benefits of having a Lexible policy. And Lexible also provides a platform for us to provide regular bi-weekly training, it's about bi-weekly, to our staff. This OPS also oversees our Kalia accreditation and I just want to say too that with, I touched on earlier, but with the policing assessment, that report had these conclusions that we have good policies and procedures as they looked over that area of the Police Department, that we have a robust training program, again, another focus area, and that our uses of force were infrequent and with few exceptions, reasonable, necessary, and proportional. Next slide. So Kalia accreditation, Kalia stands for Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies. It's an internationally accrediting authority. There's 260 law enforcement agencies in Washington State and we're one of eight agencies that is Kalia accredited. There are 158 standards for which we must provide proofs every year. So things such as, do we have a duty to intervene policy and are we following that policy? Do we have a duty to render medical aid and do we follow that policy? Do we have a field training program or just some of the standards? Our goal three that we had in going into 2021 was that we would obtain re-accreditation and we met that goal during 2017. Our onsite was conducted in July. We were re-accredited in November and I want to just quote a couple of things that the assessor said about the Police Department. Quote, "They," our department, "are heavily focused on customer service and problem solving." Another quote, "I learned things I can, I will take back to my agency." And that was regarding training. They looked at our training and said, "Wow, you guys have such a good program. I'm going to take this back." This is one of the assessors. "I'm going to take this back to my agency." And another quote, "I wish more agencies were like the Port of Seattle Police Department." That's from the Kalia creditors in looking at a department. Next slide, please. So this, I just noticed when I was sitting here, there's an error on this slide. So we actually authorized 100 and, no, there's not an error. This is 2021. So in 2021, we were authorized 123 commissioned op, full-time employees or yes, commissioned full-time employees. This year, 2022, we're actually now at 130. And so this is 2021. So authorized 41 non-commissioned and you have the numbers right there. Retention and recruitment has been a challenge. Sergeant Molly Kearns, she works very closely with Derek Bender, our HR Talent Acquisition Representative. She sits on the Change Team Hiring Subcommittee. She's a member of the Seattle University Criminal Justice Advisory Committee, Green River College Criminal Justice Advisory Committee, very engaged as far as recruitment goes. We do here at the Police Department maintain three civil service lists for officers. We maintain an entry civil service list, a lateral, and we also do an internal candidate list. We've actually hired, and so that, what that is, is it's an internal list, people, internal port employees can apply as police officers and then we'd have one list for that and we've actually hired some officers off of that list. So there are employees, a traffic support specialist, for instance, that recently, he wanted to become a police officer. He applied with us. He's now in the academy. We had a dispatcher who wanted to be a police officer, applied with us. He's been now working with us for a few years. So we have those three lists. Again, we're authorized 130 officers. We have 102 presently, so we're down 28 officers. Variety of recruitment events that we participate in, port-only lunch and learn. We advertise in a different, like LinkedIn, Indeed, PoliceOne, multiple different outlets. We do recruitment at colleges and universities that are local, JBLM. And so we're trying to spread the widest net we can to get the most qualified candidates as far as our recruitment goes and also retention. So I'll just touch real quick on retention. Same thing, we're working hard with the union, with port leadership to try to make sure that we have, that we're very competitive, maintain that competitiveness in order to retain our staff as well as just really creating the best work environment that we can because we know that's one of the things that's going to retain staff as well. Next slide. So our 911 Police and Communications Team, this team is critical to our capabilities to respond to both fire and police calls and public safety on our properties. They managed during 2021, I'm very proud of this team, they managed to keep the communications center open 24/7 with only 13 dispatchers and three supervisors. I mean, that's almost unheard of and really the authorized staffing in 2021 was 16. It was approved an additional hire, so we're at 17 this year. And really that, that team needs about 18 to effectively manage without necessarily generating a lot of overtime. But that team, they, they came in, they worked, they did a fabulous job during 2021 and so I'm very proud of their work. Next slide. So this slide is the formal partnerships, inter-local agreements or MOUs that it does not capture our partnerships. We have many more partnerships than this. It doesn't capture partnerships with Aviation Security, DHS, TSA. And I'm just going to touch on a couple of things with these partnerships. One is that, you know, in 2018, we had assigned an officer to the Puget Sound Auto Theft Task Force. We had to pull that officer back because of our staffing and so that officer is now back in our, in the department. It is something, we're still partners, we're still part of the ILA. We want to continue to be a part of that ILA with the hopes of being able to put an officer back on that team in the future. We've been part of the FBI Joint Terrorism Task Force for many years and this has proven to be an invaluable partnership. Next slide. So community engagement. Community engagement is a little bit different here at the Port of Seattle than it is in other communities. And so I wanted to just highlight and bring to the attention, here's, here's some of the things that we do when it comes to community engagement, community policing. And so we'll talk a little bit about SEA and Seaport Communities. Maren Burnett here in just a moment, we'll, in a few moments, we'll talk regarding the task force on policing and civil rights. Persons in homelessness or, excuse me, persons in crisis or experiencing homelessness was an area that we had focus on in 2021 and then just collaboration with other business partners. Next slide. So with this, I'm going to, I'm going to turn this over to Maren. Thank you very much for being here and she'll be taking the next few slides. I'll just say real quick that, you know, during the assessment, we engaged over 50 internal and external stakeholders, port staff, community representatives, those who are our customers. And so there was a lot of engagement with this assessment and with that, I will turn it over to Maren.
Absolutely. Happy to be here, happy to help. So for the policing assessment that we did last year, we closed everything out at the end of, at the beginning of 2021. But with 52 recommendations across eight specific areas of review, we wanted to make sure that the recommendations could not just be something that sat on a desk, that they were implementable, that we had a plan for how to move it forward. And so what I did was I formulated the Policing Assessment Implementation Team, the PATE. So the PATE, after we had done all of the external, we had external folks who participated, internal folks who participated, we had over 250 people at the port who contributed substantively to the policy that was written that actually ended up dictating the assessment itself. So there was a lot of engagement there, but once we had taken it there, we needed to bring it back home and say, what is it from an internal standpoint that would be necessary in order for us to implement these? How are we going to put them into, how are we going to give them priority? How are we going to make sure that we are planning for this over the course of several years because 52 recommendations will likely not be implemented within one? So I worked with folks from obviously the Police Department, with HR, Labor Relations, Workplace Responsibility, Finance and Budget, and myself as a facilitator to pull all of it together. Through that work, we did the following. Can you get the next slide, please? Thank you. So over the course of five months, I met with this team of people every three weeks and they were super dedicated. They were active participants in all of it and their job was to let me know and let each other know, to have converse amongst themselves. What is it that we would need in order to make this actually happen? Is it something that came down from Olympia? Is it something that we would actually need additional resources to pull forward? Is it something that we would need to hear from legal or from Workplace Responsibility in order to enact? So all of those teams, all of those folks were speaking to each recommendation from their perspective and being able to work with, across all of those cross-port, right, to ensure that when we say we're going to implement recommendations one, five, fifty-seven, and two, we know what it takes in order to do that. So what we, that facilitation led to a lot of more congruence with regard to which was something, as I said earlier, that came out of Olympia. So they were, they were prioritized. All 52 recommendations were prioritized. The implement, the, we looked at implications to the budget, POSPD policy, port policy, external relations, and legal. And our need to make sure that we were having a cross-departmental coordination when we were pulling it together. Can I get the next slide? So once we finished and we actually did report, we took all of these recommendations or impact statements, as we call them, on the recommendations and basically they went as an addendum to the 52 recommendations that came from 21CP so that when they are pushed forward, there is a clear line of sight on how we would get it done. We sent that to the Executive Director in April and what we basically found out is that all the things that were the highest level recommendations were already being implemented by the department. When the department got their 52 recommendations, they took that ball and ran with it. They wanted to make sure that they were not waiting for the PATE, not waiting for, for permission in some cases, when it was especially those that were handed down from Olympia through the, the police reform legislation that was, that was pushed through, that they were trying to be as active and progressive as possible with regard to the recommendations. So we found that most of those that were highest level priority were already being worked on actively. We also found out that multiple recommendations are going to require that the department partner up with especially HR and Workplace Responsibility and they were very open to and trying to say, "We will be helpful for you. How can we help you? How can we work with you to implement?" And that it's probably going to take a couple of years. We are very resource constrained. The department is no different and they're working diligently to get more bodies, more people to push forward all the initiatives, but by the same token, it's probably going to be something that stretches out over the next couple of years. And that's all I had. I hand it back to the Acting Interim Chief.
All right, thank you. And I want to just also say that, you know, I personally and my team have worked with Maren over the last several years doing SWAT analysis and other things. And I mean, she was the perfect person as far as doing this implementation plan and helping us put that together and just really has done a fabulous job for us. I mean, if I could just take her and just bring her over to the Police Department and have, I know you have a lot of value, everyone, a lot of people are probably saying that, but, so we just really appreciate all of your help with, with that. And then also want to say that with, with the implementation plan.
He's too nice. He's too nice.
No, you deserve it. Anyway, with the implementation plan, we have several plans in the Police Department. So we have the implementation plan. We have a three-year trespass reduction and safety plan for SEA. We have an employee engagement plan. We have, I'm going to talk about service-level agreements here in a little bit. And really, what we need to do and what we plan to do, probably with Maren's help as well, is create a strategic plan this next year and take all those plans and put them together because it's too much work for us to try to do all four of those plans. We don't want to be disjointed. We want to make sure it's all aligned, aligned with the Port of Seattle's goals and the mission that the Port of Seattle has as well. So you'll see, you may hear more about the implementation plan, but it's, my goal, hope at least, is that it's really put into a strategic plan where we have a roadmap going forward to make sure that all of those things, as well as our other plans, are all executed. So this slide here, response to persons in crisis. This has been a real challenge for us, really since early 2019, started with the pandemic, resources starting to close down, other challenges that we've had with it, where we started seeing a growing number of persons in crisis and experiencing homelessness, not just at the port properties, but in our area. And so some of that flowing into the port properties and then some issues that we were having at our properties as well as far as public safety goes. And so I'm really happy that we had somebody in our staff, Michelle Bregel, that had, yes, yes, Michelle Bregel, that had the skill set already, the experience of, you know, networking, coordinating with other resources, and trying to get some of these persons the help that they needed. And so that was one significant resource that we had. We took her out of patrol. She became our, she piloted, is still is piloting, a crisis coordinator position, which really I intend to keep in place for a long time. And it's just done a fabulous job. The other thing is collaborating with the SEA Cares Team. And that team is aviation leadership, external relations, the Office of Equity Diversity and Inclusivity, the aviation security, customer service, and all the stakeholders coming together and really trying to develop strategies as far as how do we, you know, deal with this situation where we can balance public safety with still having a humane, compassionate approach to this particular issue. And so several strategies were employed over the year. In 2021, you know, we engaged with non-governmental entities and governmental entities, Mobile Crisis Unit, Evergreen Treatment Services, Washington Department of Veterans Affairs, Catholic Community Services, to try to, again, leverage those resources and try to get as much help as we could with this particular issue. There's some stats up there as far as, you know, the pilot officially started in August. Michelle started doing some work in May regarding this. And so during that time, at the end of 2021, the numbers we counted were 77 different persons that she had assisted. She'd also provided some all-staff training, new hire training, new hires coming on. And then she collaborated with, her work's not just limited to the airport. She also collaborated with CTAC, Berrien, and Des Moines, even Auburn actually as well as far as some homelessness or some, excuse me, some encampments. And so really trying to help with some of those issues also. We do have that occur on our properties as far as encampments go. And again, due to the critical infrastructure, international infrastructure we have, we have to maintain safe properties. And so, you know, our port properties, they're not shelters. We can't allow them to become shelters. And so we try to help those folks, but as a last resort, if we have to trespass and use enforcement, then that's also what we have to do. And so I will say that in those cases where we do make arrests and someone's booked into jail, they're put into the criminal justice system or at least with the courts, the CTAC courts now, we contract with them. Michelle has taken initiative to make contact with those individuals and to still try to get them help, to try to leverage the court system as well to try to get them the assistance that they need. And I'm, there's a few incidents where we've had where I'm convinced that Michelle saved a life, just in her interaction with those individuals. And so getting them connected with family, getting them into, you know, into some stable housing. And anyway, she's been phenomenal. So, you know, she presented recently at the AAAE Conference, Airports Executive Conference. And I got a ton, a tremendous amount of feedback on that as far as airports coming up to us and saying, what you guys have here, this is a model response. This is a best practice. LaGuardia Airport contacting us, saying, hey, we want to talk more with Michelle because, you know, we want to try to model what you guys are doing at SEA. So very proud of her work, very proud of the work that the team is doing in this regards. I could keep talking on this, so we better just move on. Next slide, please. So improving service to port business partners. This was a, something I conceptualized. You know, my law enforcement career, part of my philosophy has been, what does the community want when it comes to policing? How can we partner together, work together? It's in a municipality, you know, we're being paid in a sense for our services through tax dollars and other funds. Someone's paying us to provide those law enforcement services. So we need to go out to the customer. We need to talk to the customer. We need to say, hey, what do you want? And not necessarily say, we have all the expertise, we'll tell you what you need. No. And so we engaged with our aviation and maritime business units and basically said, what do you want? Here's our capabilities, but what do you guys really want from your Police Department? So after a series of discussions, we ended up developing a menu of options. It was kind of like, do you want an economy ticket, airline ticket, a main, a business class, or first class? Each of those are going to cost something different, but you get different services with each of those. Or do you want basic cable, you know, enhanced cable, or do you want premium with everything you can get, all the sports channels? And so we had those discussions. And, you know, I was really pleased that both aviation and maritime said, we want enhanced services. We want more than just the core services you can provide. We want the customer experience to be great on our properties, and we want public safety. And so we settled on what those enhanced services would look like, worked with Director Metrick and other executives to ensure that we had the funding to support that and developed the plan. So now we have service-level agreements with both aviation and maritime. One of the things that goals this year is really to kind of look at, okay, because of our staffing issues, we may have to dial that back a little bit till we can get up to staffing. And so again, to continue to work with our customers on what services we can provide and then make those adjustments. Next slide. So the budget, I know that the budget's already been presented with central services budget. So this is up here, just a quick flash as far as the Police Department budget goes. I do want to point out, what you, general expenses, the last line there, most of that is expenditures for our drug interdiction efforts and teams. So our drug interdiction team is funded by forfeiture funds. And so as we are seizing drugs and cash that is coming through our properties, those funds are, and oftentimes are forfeited, we will use those funds. The revenue is not picked up in our budget. So where you see a difference of $361,000 on that slide, that's because the revenues from the drug forfeiture seizures are not captured, but the expenditures are in our general expenses. I just, I want to make sure that folks didn't think we were over budget. That didn't happen this year. We're thankful for that. Okay, next slide, please. So I'm getting down to the last couple of slides to talk about real quick. 2022, moving forward, department goals. We have eight department goals. And so these are the goals that we have. I don't necessarily intend to read through these. I already mentioned the plan that we have regarding reducing trespassing, maintaining our core service-level functions, and then clear accreditation. So on clear accreditation, we have an, we have an onsite once every four years. And then on the off-years, we still have to show and demonstrate all those proofs I talked about previously that were meeting that accreditation. So we do a virtual, we do that virtually. Next slide. And then listing, I already hit on some of these, the service-level agreements, touched on that already. Number six, increase department staffing levels to 95% of authorized FTEs. That is a stretch goal for us. That is going to be challenging. But again, we are working hard with HR to try to ensure that we at least get close to that goal, and we'll continue to work with them. And I do, I just want to say, I really appreciate HR's efforts. Derek Bender is our Talent Acquisition Rep, Kim Demaree, and Katie Gerard. I mean, they have, I think they've done everything they can as far as helping us at this point in time. And I would support any additional help that they can receive so they can continue to help us and other departments with hiring. Okay. And I think that's all we have as far as the slides go. I guess next slide there. And before taking questions, I'll just say that, you know, your Police Department officers and staff, that they do everything from giving directions to anxious travelers, responding to bomb threats or on aircraft, conducting patrols, responding to emergencies on the water, being trained and equipped to deal with potential acts of terrorism and how to mitigate those issues and prevent those issues, and all the other traditional law enforcement functions that any other agency would need to perform. And one thing I've been just thoroughly impressed with, I know I've said this before, is the level of compassion and customer service that I see in our staff. I mean, it really is phenomenal. And so, anyway, it's a great department. You have an exceptional team here at the Port of Seattle. And then also, just want to make sure I cover this. Again, this, not this presentation, well, this presentation will be too, but our annual report is on our website. So you can go there and there's more details in that annual presentation. I would ask, if you go to the annual presentation, look at it, that you specifically look for the employee spotlights. So we spotlight four employees this year. We did the same thing last year, read their stories. They're inspirational. And so I would just, if you do nothing else, go there and check out those spotlights.
Thank you so much, Interim Chief. All right, we're going to take a little time for questions. Would you like to start, Commissioner Haskins?
Yes, please. Chief, via, I love your love for your job and your department. It is so important to have that inspirational leadership, particularly in a police department. I love this annual report. I think it's very thorough. I think it's an improvement upon last year. This is an area of great interest for me, and so I need you to bear with me as I just go through it, because I did pull up the report. I did compare it to last year's report. I did compare it to your use of force report. And so I've just got a few questions that hopefully you can help me through, as well as some comments and feedback. So first and foremost, I just want to commend you for the diversification of your command staff. It appears that you've had the opportunity to hire and promote women into your ranks, including at the top, and I think that that is so important. Thank you for walking the talk on that front. On page eight of your report, I think it means accreditation instead of acidification, so just going to point that one out. Stop it, Fred. Or ocean acidification, I don't know. I love the officer highlights that you have. I think that storytelling is so important. And I, a point of personal privilege, my mother is a direct mental health professional at King County. She does direct crisis intervention and including training. And she told me, keep your eye out for Officer Bregel. She is the best of the best. When I got here, I didn't have to keep my eye out. She is out there front and center, leading. She was recognized with an award earlier this year. And so I hope to see Officer Bregel's story featured in the next annual reports. Your information about use of force data, if you move down in the report itself to, I lost the page, but in your annual report, it says that, I actually need to find the page, sorry. Next, 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 next. Okay. On page 27 of the annual report in your use of force data, it says that impact weapons, incidents involving impact weapons occurred on seven occasions. There were seven reported incidents with impact weapons. But on your use of force report, it says zero. So it could have been an Excel copy and paste issue, but there's a discrepancy there, and it should be addressed.
Okay, I'll have to look at that.
Okay. And then, also, something that's not represented in your use of force data that I would like to see included, given that we do have a K-9 team, I would like to see use or incidents involving dog bites included as well. So I'm, it's not in the use of force data or in the annual report, and it should be reported.
Yeah, we can have a section for that. I can talk about that real quick, is we do not have any tracking of K-9. But, and so I think you'll see a zero on that year to year. And so that's not a, all of our dogs are explosive detection, and then we have two narcotic dogs.
Oh, well, that would explain it.
Yeah, so that's why, that's...
Okay, thank you for that clarification. That's helpful. And then the other thing that is not incorporated into the use of force data, but I think is also important to list, is not just the complaints, investigations into officers and alleged misconduct, but also the commendations that they receive from members of the public for the very good work that they do. I think it's also important to capture that data and report it publicly as well.
Yeah, good point. Thank you.
Do you collect any information on decertification? Or do you report to the CJTC or to the National Decertification Index?
Yeah, we do, we do report to the CJTC. And they're the ones that would decertify, not us, as you know. And so there are some requirements that we have in statute as far as needing to report certain incidents to them. And so we're definitely in compliance with that.
Okay. And then can you also just briefly talk to me about body cams or dash cams, whether you have them, whether you use them, whether you need them, or will be seeking funding for them?
Yeah, no, great question. Happy to do that. And so body-worn cameras, we secured the funding for that this last year. We do have, that equipment actually is here at the station. We are negotiating with the union. And so we have to complete those negotiations before we start deploying those. But we fully intend to deploy body-worn cameras. We are beginning to look a little bit at dash cams and potentially adding that, those cameras as well. That hasn't, really, it's getting through the body-worn camera issue first. That's our primary concern. And then, once we do that, we may be looking at dash cams as well.
Okay. We'll keep our ears out for that. And so I, you know, when you also present to Jack, when you present to this body on the annual report, I'm hearing a higher rate of reported incidents of involving use of force. I'm also hearing higher foot traffic, I'm here, that's coming through CTAC Airport, which could account for that growth in incidents. I'm also hearing from you the greater need to do some very specific crisis intervention work. And that, I just want to recognize and commend the SEA Cares Initiative that you've launched in conjunction with Lance and Dawn and others, that is making a difference. I love that, even though that's relatively new, that you've been able to capture that data, deliver it to us. My question is, are those SEA Cares officers who are doing the crisis intervention work, are they sworn? Are they civilian? You know, do they carry weapons? And this is connecting to the larger problem of having a personnel shortage. So do the people that we need to hire, given that there's a greater need for crisis intervention work, do they need to be officers? Can they be just professionals in the mental health world?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. So what I didn't mention is, we also, I did propose and was approved a mental health professional, which is a civilian position. And so as you know, Michelle Bregel is a police officer. And, but we also just recognizing the benefit and the work she's been able to do. Again, we advertised for an MHP position, and that testing has been completed now. We have a list. It's really just down to making the job off. making the job offer, and then having that person start after they get through the background. The part of our three-year strategic plan that we developed in dealing with this issue, you know, one was to conduct enforcement. The other one involved the crisis coordinator position, the mental health professional position. It's a three-year plan with three phases. We're in phase two. Part of phase two is to hire a mental health professional, and to really put together co-responder teams, which is a best practice in law enforcement in dealing with this situation. And so that mental health professional, as well as Michelle, will be part of those teams. And then they will assist and help also with giving a deeper level of training to our officers, so that we have more highly trained officers. All of our officers have training in crisis intervention. But we intend to, and part of our plan, is to increase that training, help them to be more capable in dealing with these situations, and then have those co-responder and highly trained teams by year three. So 24/7, we have that coverage and that skill set that's out there.
Yeah, I think that's also importantly embracing the shift from a warrior to a guardian approach to law enforcement, right? And so I think it's completely appropriate in what you've presented to us with engaging community partners, you know, and community-based services and organizations. And I just really want to call that out and commend you for thinking that way and acting that way. I also want to thank you for making sure that you're giving us a dedicated section on how we're going to actually tangibly implement those 52 recommendations, many of which are well underway. I also have a couple favorites. And one of those recommendations was to establish a quarterly committee to engage stakeholders. And it sounds like that has been formalized. I just want to call out that milestone achievement and regularly publishing data reports publicly. That transparency is so key. And I'd really like to thank you for really holding up those tenets of effective policing. How are our officers doing on overtime hours? How are they, are they fatigued? Is that information available to us in that regard?
Yeah, I mean, certainly, we could provide any information as far as the number of overtime hours. It's higher than I am comfortable with. It's higher than I like. And, you know, that's one of the things that we've been trying to work with the union on. Overtime, is there ways that we can decrease the overtime? We have both voluntary, first we offer voluntary overtime, but then at times we have to mandate officers to come in and work overtime as well. So it is something that we've had discussions with our leadership team on, is if you've got officers that are coming in and they look wiped out and just exhausted because of the amount of hours, then that's something where if we need to intervene and send someone home, say, no, you need to, you know, you can't work that much overtime. As a matter of fact, just within the last couple of weeks, we observed that. Not someone coming in tired, but just the number of hours was excessive. And we thought, hey, we need to, we need to check on this officer, and we might need to deny some overtime in that particular case. And so it is, it is something that's definitely on our radar, and we're watching. One of the things, we have taken some measures to try to reduce overtime, I guess, without stating all the strategies. But, so we're very aware of it. It's a concern of mine, and we're going to keep trying to address that.
Talk to me about the mental health of our officers, given the increased stress and the increased demand for the crisis intervention work that's happening. Is it part of their collective bargaining agreement to do mental health checks? Do we provide that as a free service to them and our officers getting that employee assistance program benefits that we offered other port staff?
Yeah, so, I mean, they, we obviously, all that assistance is offered to our officers if they want to take advantage of that assistance. This is, I'll share with the commissioners and any of my officers that are watching, this is the first time they're going to hear this. But I am looking at potentially initiating, I shouldn't say potentially, I am going to initiate a wellness program within the department.
Love that.
And so that's something that, when I was at Tuck Willa, and then even here for the last few years, that I've had a lot of interest in as far as having a, really a comprehensive wellness program. That really includes five pillars is, I've been to a few seminars on this. And, and so, you know, mental health, emotional, physical health, financial. We don't always think about financial, but officers, I'm sure we have staff in our teams and stuff, that, you know, they get into financial issues and that creates a lot of stress. And then spiritual. And so those are the five pillars to look at. At Tuck Willa, did a little bit as far as trying to implement some of that. We've tried to do it here, but one of the problems is, if you have a commander or sergeant or somebody who's doing that, and it's not their full-time project, they get distracted. There's other things that come up. And so one of the things that I'll be pushing out to my staff in the next few weeks, is looking for someone that really, we're short-staffed, but it's so important, the wellness, that we're going to take somebody, doesn't have to be an officer, could be a non-commissioned staff. And they're going, it's going to be a project they're going to work on for the next three, six, nine, 12 months if necessary, to make sure that we really have a comprehensive wellness program. So again, any of my staff that are listening or watch this later, you're hearing it first here at the commission meeting. But, yeah, it's a, thank you for your interest in that, because it is definitely a concern of ours.
And it's a priority of mine. Last question, and then a point of personal privilege again. But we, my question for you, chief, is will the surface level agreements with the port business partners, does that mean additional revenues for your department?
Yes, additional costs or expenditures?
No, revenues.
Revenues. Revenues in that, so with the police department, we don't generate a whole lot of revenues, but we do allocate our expenditures to the airport and the seaport. So for the airport, about 85% of our budget is covered by the airport, and 13% or so is covered by the seaport, and a little bit from Northwest Seaport Alliance and Economic Development. So, so as we work with our business partners, they agreed, as they increased some of the services, they agreed to, with an understanding that more would be allocated to them from their budgets. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so it's not as if you have an independent contract to offer policing services. It's
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, then that makes sense. Well, thank you for letting me go through. You're lucky my computer died. But one point of personal privilege is, I'd just like to shout out somebody that's featured in your report, Lieutenant Daniel Breed, who was recently promoted. And we started at the bottom together at, as students at Seattle University's in their criminal justice program undergrad and then grad school. And so he was also recognized as Officer of the Year. And so I just know it firsthand that you work with the finest. And, and thank you so much for bringing it up for all of us today.
Thanks.
Commissioner Feldman.
Well, I can't say I've done as much homework as Commissioner Hasegawa, and as the hours suggest, that you're all lucky about that. Actually, I have some, thank you for covering a lot of those, elucidating a lot of those things. And I mean, I did note that you have, you know, something like, you know, what is it, 55, 55 folks that are just one to four years on the staff. And I think that's, you know, that's an opportunity as well as a challenge. But I think, you know, for, you know, instituting new cultural initiatives, this is the way to do it. And I wish you the best in indoctrinating them into the sense of ethical leadership that you exhibit. So I think that's a good thing. I have two sort of tangential things. But one is, while, you know, dog bites are not my issue, dogs are. But I never thought of that as an issue to measure. But, but I did know that dogs are remarkably effective in what they do. And I know there were some concerns about dogs with labor. It was like, you know, how many people would a dog displace? But then I learned that their union folks were holding those dogs. So that somewhat mitigated some of that impact. But I'm just wondering, is there any challenge in terms of getting the dogs you need? Are there limits on either financially or availability?
Not really. I mean, the aviation, you know, Director Lance Little has been wonderful as far as just giving us support regarding K-9 dogs. Again, you know, these costs are allocated to them, to the aviation, to airport. Now, we do pick up a little bit of cost from TSA with some of our other K-9. And I don't know exactly how many K-9 we, they would allow us to have. You know, we'd have to work with them as far as if we're going to want to have additional K-9 teams. And then, of course, we need the personnel as part of that team as well.
So you don't see any challenge at this point regarding dogs?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, that's something I can follow up on just to ensure. But if the Port of Seattle were to say, hey, we wanted five more, you know, K-9 dogs, we certainly could have as many port K-9s, teams as we wanted to, and as we had officers or staff who wanted to be part of, you know, those teams.
Yeah, well, it's for you to tell us what you feel is necessary. And I just didn't know whether you were, you were hankering for some more four-legged staff or not. But be that as it may, it's that many less shoes to worry about. I did have one other question was in terms of, I don't know how familiar you are with your dive training obligations, how often your dive team needs to get in the pool, whether or not they have a job to do?
Yes, well, they do have a job to do, certainly. And they work with the Coast Guard as far as some of that security requirements. And so we do have an agreement with the Coast Guard. I don't have the details of that, you know, agreement with me here today. But there are expectations that they do security checks, especially during the cruise season, and around the terminals. And, and so there are some requirements there. But I could get you that information.
Well, what's interesting to me, I know for any dive certification, you have to maintain a certain amount of time, whether or not there's a job at hand. And obviously, you get drill credit if you actually are on a job. But one of the things that, for future conversation is, you know, there's work being done now to do some underwater surveys of Elliott Bay for marine vegetation. I always thought, wouldn't it be great if some of the cops could be part of that as part of their, you know, getting some hours underwater if they weren't busy doing something else? I just thought it'd be kind of a fun integration of the program, if indeed that was something of interest to your maritime force. I think it would be a great effort to expand on our, on our growing efforts to characterize marine life in Elliott Bay, for what it's worth.
I will certainly talk to sergeant about that, that idea, so.
Make for great TV. All right, thank you.
Commissioner, before we transition on that, you have a new asset, right, on the maritime side? Is it worth mentioning that?
Oh, yeah, sure. So harbor, we have a new asset as far as a vessel goes. And so, yeah, I wish I had some pictures to show you here, but
Oh, I think I saw that it was in, at 66 at Bell Harbor Marina. It would have like three 200s on it, was that?
Yeah, I'm not familiar enough with it to be able to say for sure.
Bad boat. It was a bad boy boat.
Yes. And so
So we have a new boat, in other words.
Yes, we have a new boat, new vessel, and appreciate the support from the executive director and staff and commissioners to support that. So, thank you.
It was built in Washington, right? It was one of the safe boat or something like that, I think it was?
I think that's it. Yeah.
It looked like a coasty boat, yeah.
If you ever want to ride on the boat, just let me know, and we can facilitate that.
Thank you.
All right. I also had a couple of my questions. I recall last year asking about mental health services, so I appreciate the follow-up there. And it sounds like we're definitely made that a priority, and that's excellent. Also about overtime costs and just reiterating the support for recruiting efforts. And, you know, it is probably cheaper to be fully staffed than to be understaffed and having to use overtime. And I know that we have a lot to, our department offers a lot. And I know you guys are doing your darn just to fill those slots with both laterals and new hires. And so the video is great. Hopefully, the viewing at the convention will draw in some folks who we can bring the best and the brightest from not only regionally, but nationally. Can you describe to me the concept duty to intervene?
Yeah, sure, certainly. So if an officer, so Washington State law, that was one of the reform bills, included duty to intervene. And so if an officer sees another officer that is using excessive force, or engaged in some other conduct that would be illegal against our policies, then, well, there's two things. One is duty to intervene, one is duty to report. So duty to intervene would be excessive force type of situations that the officer then has the duty to step in and stop that use of force or intervene so that that use of force does not continue. So that's what duty to intervene is. Duty to report would be if there's misconduct or, you know, unlawful conduct, things of that nature, then officers have the responsibility to report that through their chain of command. And then we have a responsibility to report those incidents to the training, Criminal Justice Training Center or Commission.
Thank you. And then finally, you know, I know oftentimes the issues are maybe top of mind for commissioners, sort of what the latest news headline was. But I think as we think about policing generally, and reflect on the recent tragedy in Uvalde, that the element there that seemed to have broken down was leadership. And, you know, my experience with you, chief, has been solid. But I also know that, you know, in moments of crisis, your team is going to look to you. And so I hope that you've taken time to reflect on that crisis moment and what broke down, and have begun to work with your command staff and the entire team to say, you know, if faced with a situation like that, which is not unimaginable here in an airport, where we'd have a group of captive individuals, you know, what would we do? So that you kind of gameplay that before the crisis moment arises. And so you don't need to necessarily comment on that, but it is something that is, I certainly took to heart from those recent events.
Yeah, can I, can I take a moment?
Please do.
Yeah, just so you know, too, that many years ago, I was on SWAT for 13 years. I was a commander of the regional SWAT team for seven years. And I was an active shooter instructor certified by the National Tactical Officers Association. And so really, you know, these types of events have been, I don't want to use the word near and dear, but just, but have been close to me, I guess you could say. And actually even published an article in the national, in the tactical journal, that's quarterly, I think they do push that out quarterly, several years ago regarding the incident in Bezlon. And that was a terrorist incident, but it was a school that was taken over by terrorists. And so this is an area where I have spent a lot of time thinking about our staff, and not just myself. We have other staff that, you know, are very, have much, a lot of expertise when it comes to active shooter types of events, hostage types of events, barricade issues, you know, how to respond to those. We train our officers in that. We're working with, even just this last year, reaching out with, to Lance Little and his staff about, hey, you know, let's work more on active shooter type of incidents, so that it's not just our staff, the police department that's responding to it, but even just port staff, you know, knowing what to do in those types of incidents. And so, so anyway, it's something that we're very tuned into. You know, God forbid it ever happens in here, but we always have to plan like it's going to happen. And so just be prepared for it. So I appreciate those comments. And our staff certainly is highly aware of those types of incidents. And we're trying to do what we can to prepare for them.
Thank you, chief. Thanks for the presentation today. And go ahead, Commissioner Feldman.
So I recall in the previous report that there was some question about, you know, how many of the interactions were basically on port property versus community action or actions with, you know, mutual aid situations? And then, and then the nuance of that became like, you know, how much is the composition, diversity composition of the, of the police force representative of the community? And then the question is, what community, right? You know, who are we really policing? And I'm just, I'm just wondering, in terms of, in the, in the characterization of these reports, are we, are we looking at, I thought it was very instructive. I thought, you know, use of force in situations like that would seem to be more prevalent off port property, as I recall. I don't, I'm trying to pull this out from last year. But in terms of just trying to, you know, look at, you know, future interventions, or how, how one would address these issues, I mean, it seems to be potentially, you know, different strategies based on locations of these occurrences.
Yeah, 2020 was unique in that report, because some of those uses of force were during some of the protests that we, I mean, we had some other incidents in 2019 and 20. And so that may be some of what you're recalling. I think that I think that, you know, most of our uses of force are on our properties, not necessarily outside our properties. There are, we are part of some regional teams. And so, so we will have some uses of force, you know, with those regional teams. But most of them are on our properties. But most of them, we really have very few uses of force. We don't have any uses of force, but I think we average around 30, 31, 32. Most of those are taking someone to the ground and stabilizing them, which is a safer way to handcuff them if you're making arrest. And so that's really the majority of those. You know, the most, the two most significant uses of force we had in 2000 and this last year, 2021, was impact munitions. I'm going to look into that number that you gave me previously, Commissioner Hasagawa, regarding the seven impact uses of force. But impact munitions, and in both of those, it was somebody, you know, one was someone with a knife and that was off our properties. And then another one was someone with a swing in a pipe, a metal pipe, and then having some rocks that was coming towards an officer. That originated on our properties and it ended up on International Boulevard. So it was, I think, I believe it was off our properties when we deployed the force, but that incident actually initiated or originated here at the airport.
So it just might have been the anomalous here with the chop and things like that going on.
I, I think so. I think so.
Great. Well, thank you so much for your service.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, GPM. That concludes our scheduled business items today. Are there any other closing comments this time from commissioners?
I just want to make clear that, given that I shouted my abortions on Friday and I've been receiving feedback, the overwhelming majority of it has been positive. By my account, I don't want anyone to feel intimidated out of feeling like they can or should share because overwhelmingly, it has been positive. From port employees, on Instagram, even in the Seattle Times comments. The only place where it's been negative is from Twitter. And if I survived high school, I think I can survive a weak-ass Twitter storm. So again, choose daylight and it's your choice. You don't owe anybody anything, but you are in control of your message and you're not alone. And here at the Port of Seattle, we uplift and we support you.
Commissioner Feldman?
Well, far less enlightening, but I just felt to account for the fact that I was on travel the past three days in San Jose and Sacramento with a august group from Clean and Prosperous Institute, which included Senators Rolfes and as well as FIE and Fitzgibbon, looking at clean tech innovation that we want to bring out, whether it be hydrogen, fuel cells, battery technology. And quite encouraging, quite encouraging. While it's easy to be a little dismayed by the state of the climate, it's really quite remarkable to see the amount of smarts that are going into addressing these challenges. So more to come. Thank you.
Executive Director Metrick, any closing comments?
I don't, Commissioners, thanks for your attention today to these important topics. Thank you.
Terrific. Hearing no further comments and having no further business, if there's no objection, we are adjourned at 3:16 PM. Thank you so much.
Have a great big hay.